Donna Vicki List, you guys ready? You guys all ready to begin? Steve, Ann, you ready? Town manager Zutima. Town manager Zutima, ready to begin? Town manager? Ready? Okay. Good evening. I call the order. Sorry. Our mission statement is connecting our diverse community to enhance quality of life through innovative programs and services. I now like to call to order the Morrisville Town Council regular meeting for June 11th, 2024. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On June 13th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. Officer Rodriguez is our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. Councilmember Rao will provide this invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening's invocation is in honor of Juneteenth and Pride Month. Please bow our heads in prayer or stand if you may. As we gather here today, let us take a moment to reflect on the significance of this month as we celebrate both Juneteenth and Pride Month. Two observances that remind us of the ongoing journey towards freedom, equality, and justice. Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, commemorates the day in 1865 when the last enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas learned of their emancipation, within two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. This is the day to honor the resilience, strength, and enduring spirit of the Black community. We remember this evening the Shallow Community and all they have meant to Black history in Morrisville. Juneteenth is a reminder of the work still ahead of us to achieve true racial equality. At the same time, we observe Pride Month, celebrating the LGBTQ community and the progress made towards acceptance and equal rights. Pride Month honors the courage and struggles of those who have fought and continue to fight for the right to love freely and live openly. It is time to recognize the importance of visibility and the power of unity in the face of discrimination. Today, we honor the intersecting paths of these two movements. We acknowledge that the fight for freedom and equality is not bound by race, gender, or sexuality. It is a shared struggle that requires compassion from all of us. Let us commit today that we always strive to make our nation, as our Constitution mandates, a more perfect union. A nation where we are judged not only by the content of our character, a nation where we are judged by the content of our character, and where freedom can ring for all citizens of our nation. As we stand together in this moment, we commit to being allies in the pursuit of justice. I close this evening's invocation in the words of the late Reverend Martin Luther King. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Diversity is our strength, and embracing our differences, we become stronger as a community. May we be inspired by the resilience of those who came before us, and may we carry forward their legacy with law and respect on wavering determination. We pray for the strength to create a world where freedom, equality, and justice are not just aspirations, but realities for all of us. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to share at this time? Okay. Would anyone like to propose any amendments to this evening's agenda?
I would like to propose an amendment.
Councilmember Body?
I would like to make a motion that we do not do the second closed session, the personnel matter.
Second.
Okay. So if someone wants to make a motion to... Okay. Is that a full motion to adopt the agenda with that missing?
With that change.
Or do you have to... That's fine. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda with that item removed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have an agenda this evening. There are two items on this evening's consent agenda. A resolution for the appointment of town clerk and a resolution appointing an interim finance officer. Town clerk was sworn in this afternoon prior to the start of the meeting. We welcome Patricia Spillane at this time. Can we give her a hand? Would anyone like to pull either of those items for discussion? I entertain the motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second by Councilmember Body. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0 as well. There are two administrative reports this evening. Quarterly capital projects update and report on advisory committee's summer recruitment. Administrative reports are intended to be for information only unless Town Council has specific questions. Would anyone like to pull either of those items with any specific questions? Okay. So we'll move on, but I will like to remind everyone that our committee appointment cycle, you can apply until July 1st this year, so we encourage everyone to apply to any committee that they might be interested in. Even if they don't have vacancies, your application will be held for a year. We have six presentations this evening. At this time, we invite Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director, to come forward to recognize the 2024 Team Morrisville 101 graduates. Mr. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director, for the record. I am here tonight as mayor said to recognize our Team Morrison 101 graduates. Would our graduates please stand and line up here, so we can make this go quickly, if you would, please? All graduates, please stand and make a line here. For those who don't know, Team Morrison 101 is a four-week course that teaches high school students all about government and specifically Morrisville's government. This year's theme was sustainability in stormwater. They also spent time with police and fire. Their very first class, they actually met all departments in this very room right here, so. And another, I will say, this is our biggest class to date. We had 19 students. This should participate in the Team Morrison 101. We had 19 students, this ship just paid the new Team Morrison 101. So after I call your name, if you can take your certificate, please grab it and line up out front for me, please. And we can hold applause to the end. First is Vibeuv Aljapor. Yes, thank you. Shreya Agawal. Kashiap Javeria. Exhara Gopapit. Neve Kadekia. Sai Bevishkota. I don't think she's here, but Sanvi Adhanini. Oh, she is here. You snuck in on me. Faison Makashi. Harshida Moore. Treta Mokaportier. And I don't see the next two siblings, but we also had Jocelyn Newton and Wyatt Newton in class this year. And Siobhan Sony. James Vanhart. Chris Vargis. Simone Vias. And Kayden Wilkins. You can give our class a big round of applause, please. I want to... I want to also ask their parents to stand and be recognized as well. They're a big part of this class, and some of them enrolled their children in the class, so please stand this time for our parents. And if I could, get our council members to come down and get in the photo as well with our students. We'll be out of your way. Yeah, step down one... There you go. Yes. You good, Laura? Oh, alright. Alright, Team Morrisville 101, let's give a big hand.
Y'all and your families are welcome to stay, or you can leave, totally fine. You got a good meeting coming up. Next, we invite Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, to come forward to recognize the retirement of Amy Lindley, Development Services Coordinator.
Thank you and good evening. Development Services Coordinator Amy Lindley is retiring after 25 years of service to the town. During her time with the town, she's worked for a number of different departments and held a number of different positions. She has served as the senior administrator for the police department, a customer service representative with finance, an administrative support coordinator with Public Works, and most recently served as our Development Services Coordinator. During that time, Amy has seen a lot of changes, not just to the organization, but to the community. She works behind the scenes every day. She keeps the ship running. She does a lot of the invisible work that you don't see, but that allows everyone else to do their jobs. She was also very integral in getting our intergov online permit system up and running, and I tend to refer to her as the intergov queen, she may not know that. I can't imagine going through another budget cycle without you. You have truly been my right hand, particularly when it comes to the department's budget. You've answered questions from me time and time again, sometimes the same question multiple times, politely not reminding me that you'd answered that question before. I want to personally thank you for sticking around with us for these last few months. You may not know, but Amy actually moved to her new retirement home in the mountains late last year, and for the last several months, she has been doing a three-hour commute to the town, working remote some days, but coming in and working in person a couple of days a week. Really, really appreciate that. You got us through another intergov upgrade. You got us through another budget cycle. You didn't have to do that, but you did, and it shows the person that you are, and really appreciate it. I do hope, Amy, that you truly know the difference that you have made to this community over the years, because you have made a difference. You are a person that I admire, that I have grown to have incredible respect for over the years, and someone that today I'm happy to be able to call my friend. I truly hope that... I had a speech and I'm going off of it, so. I keep looking down at my notes and losing my place, because it's sad to see you go, but really happy for you. I hope that you enjoy that beautiful mountain view that you get to wake up to every morning. I hope you enjoy time golfing. I hope you are able to go to as many App State football games as you like and are able to spend a lot of time with those beautiful grandchildren of yours. I know they live far away, but I hope you're able to see them. I'm gonna miss you. A lot of others are gonna miss you, but know that you go with our thanks and our gratitude, and that we are very happy for you. You have earned this, you deserve it, so thank you very much. I just have little token of the town's appreciation to give to Amy. And if we can invite everyone up for a picture, I think not just the planning department, but other departments that you've worked for over the years. You've worked with so many of us. When it's the appropriate time to take a picture, I'd love to just... Anyone on Town staff that would like to be a part of that, please come up and join in.
Okay, I think now's the time.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. You want to do sat first?
It's gonna be a lot.
That's fine.
There's a lot in the mirror.
Want us in? She wants us in, let's go ahead and get in. So that was very nice, that was just a fraction of the staff whose Amy's work has affected, and she's affected all the residents and businesses in the town, and we really thank her for all her hard work. At this time, Councilmember Rao will read a proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. Afterwards, Mary Fawcett, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources, and Leslie Haney, Events and Cultural Resources Supervisor, will come forward to receive the proclamation. Councilmember Rao.
My mic is on. Proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. Whereas June is Pride Month, in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and others LGBTQ people and allies come together at various celebrations. And whereas the town of Morrisville stands with the LGBTQ community in a celebration of diversity and unity, and in remembrance of how far our country has come in the struggle to ensure that people live openly without discrimination and the affirmation of equal rights. And whereas we are proud to join other communities in acknowledging June as Pride Month and reaffirm our own towns' belief in the equal dignity of all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville has hereby proclaimed the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month and invites residents to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to respect and dignity to celebrate our diverse community. Adopted this 11th day of June 2024, Mayor TJ Colley, Patricia Spillane, Town Clerk. Thank you so much for recognizing the state and how you do for our town.
Councilmember Skargans Johnson will read a proclamation recognizing June 17th through June 23rd as National Pollinator Week. Afterwards, Kimberly Conley will come forward to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take just a moment to remind fellow council members that we do have microphones and we do have a full room, so we want to make sure that they're on when we speak, and hopefully, can everybody hear me in the back? Raise your hand. Thank you so much. I am so honored to read the proclamation for the National Pollinator Week this time as I learned about the importance of bees at a very early age. I grew up in rural northern Michigan on a fruit farm. So basically, every spring, we had this beautiful bouquet of trees that would blossom, and the beekeepers would come out and put bees... Beehives among the trees so that the fruit trees could pollinate, and we would have good yield of the crops. So bees play an important part, but there's also birds and insects too, so I really do appreciate what we can do to encourage healthy environments. The proclamation is recognizing June 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Pollinator Week. Whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish, and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas the town of Morrisville provides the community with educational opportunities to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on working lands and wildlands. And whereas the town continues its advocacy in supporting the health and nourishment of pollinators through efforts as part of the mayor's monarch pledge. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Pollinator Week and calls upon all community members to seek the knowledge, value, and benefits derived from planting native species to help keep birds and insects equipped to support the pollination of our food supply. Adopted this 11th day of June 2024, Mayor Colley and Patricia Spillane, Town Clerk. And now I'd like to come up and present the proclamation.
Thank you. I just wanted to share briefly in pro-pollinator news that the town is creating energy beehives at our meat fire station. So this is really big news. And I'd like you all to join us on August 10th, which is our Morrisville event, where I'd like to collect input from our community to help aid the trees of those kinds. So join us in Morrisville and continue to plant the plants. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Robati will read the proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth. Afterwards, Mary Fawcett, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources, and Leslie Haney, Events and Cultural Resources Supervisor, will come forward to receive the proclamation. Councilmember Robati.
Can everyone hear me? Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery in the United States. And whereas on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, some two and one-half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, Union Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced that the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas until that day, slavery had been relatively unaffected in Texas by the Emancipation Proclamation, and Texas had even been viewed as a safe haven for slave owners to relocate with their slaves, because the state experienced no large-scale fighting or significant presence of Union troops. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and on a larger scale reminds us of the promises of freedom, equity, and opportunity which are at the core of the American dream. And whereas on this day, we honor the African-American men and women that suffered under slavery and all those who have fought for justice, freedom, and equality in the town of Morrisville, the state of North Carolina, and across the country. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth in the town of Morrisville to recognize the abolition of slavery in the United States and encourage residents to celebrate the culture and achievement of African-Americans. Adopted this 11th day of June, 2024. Signed, Mayor TJ Colley, Town Clerk Patricia Spillane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for everything you've done. I'm going to make this a better one. Would you like to say thank you first?
Yes, thank you. So for those of you who are not aware, this past Saturday, we celebrated our fourth annual Juneteenth celebration for the town of Morrisville. So again, thanks to the support of the elected officials, to the senior leadership. And I extend my gratitude to the staff and their committee that worked tirelessly to put this event on. It was a great event. It took place at Shallow Park. We look forward to continuing this effort into the future. And I want you all to stay connected with us. So if you're not social with us, please look us up on the social platforms of Facebook and Instagram. Thank you.
Now we will have a presentation from Rick Ralph, our Chief Information Officer. You don't usually get applause on the way up. I like that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out just to hear the IT department presentation. We had a great turnout. Just don't hold the signs up. So again, I'm Rick Ralph, Chief Information Officer with the town of Morrisville. Going to give a little presentation about our department, what we've done, what we're doing, and what we're planning for the future. Give you a little insight into our staff and some of the stuff that we've done. First, I want to recognize the team here. Chuck, Danny, Kelly, Savannah, Jen, Rodney, and Billy. They're all here. If you want to raise your hand, thank you all for coming out. I promise you, we didn't make them come. This group has grown closer the last five years and has done some great things and really supports this organization and really cares about the community we work in. So very grateful to have this team and what they've done. So a couple did you know facts here, and I won't go through all of them. I know we are limited on time, so I promised Town Manager Zudma I would be as brief as I can. So we are a very knowledgeable group. We've got over 159 years of combined experience across the eight individuals. One key highlight that we do pride ourselves on is the security aspect. So our fish-prone percentage is 24 less than the industry standard. Fish-prone meaning how likely we are to click on those links that you receive from an email that is suspicious, that will ask you for to donate or enter your credentials. So we pride ourselves on security and providing 24% less than industry standard. We're about 4% click rate here, and industry standard is 28%. We do have a fun fact there about a staff member who pitched a perfect game. We tried to tell him that T-ball doesn't count. You're not actually pitching. But, you know, we let him have his spotlight. He's great. So this is just, these are some pictures here that indicate some of our values in action. Again, this group really demonstrates this every single day. Their dedication to their craft and what they do and the services they provide, both the organization and the community, outstanding. The integrity, obviously, being in IT, you have access to information and data. And so it's important to make sure that we're only accessing that data when it's absolutely necessary and being as truthful and responsible as we can. Here are some facts and figures for FY24 that I want to highlight. Again, we are here to serve our organization and the community. And some of these facts and figures really demonstrate how we do so. So we do get quite a bit of support tickets. Those are from staff, and that includes fixing their computers, to printing, to anything in between. And throughout that, our next data point, which is our customer satisfaction score. We're currently sitting at a 98% satisfaction score. That's over 200 responses that we received throughout the year, from help desk surveys to our customer satisfaction surveys. And that number is quite large considering the amount of responses that we have received. And industry standard sits around 60 to 70%. And really, anything considered 50 and above is good. So we really pride ourselves on providing the best customer service that we can. Again, staff, very courteous when dealing with customers. We're the first folks that they go to when they're frustrated and they can't get on their computer. So they're very capable and very great with the staff and working through these issues. We do see here with some of the forward-facing initiatives, our public Wi-Fi and our open data, we do see a year-over-year increase. We had a 20% increase from last year on our public Wi-Fi clients, and then a 450% increase on our open data usage. And that's opendata.morrisvilleNC.gov, where we post a lot of open data sets that our residents or business community can explore. Here are some of our influences, really our challenges and opportunities. And really, in each bucket, we see both challenges and opportunities living. Our user adoption, we have a great staff within the town of Morrisville. They are very open to utilizing technology to better serve our residents. And they want to learn. They want to use these tools. So really, we want to make sure that we're providing the education and training so that they can get the most out of what we provide. Data, we collect a lot of data with a lot of the services that we offer with our Smart City program. And just really with any type of initiative we deploy, there's always data that is collected as part of that. And so that's great. It's a great opportunity. But how do we utilize that to make more informed decisions? How do we analyze, discover what data sets that we have? And then how do we provide reporting and dashboarding? And that's kind of where we see as a challenge, where we need that skill set on our staff. Our workload, each year, obviously, as the town continues to grow, the more staff, the more devices that we support, we have to maintain and keep up with that. So it's important to understand that as the town grows, IT also needs to grow. And then lastly, emerging tech. We see this a lot. It's nice to see the shiny new tool in front of you. But there are things to consider when we evaluate this type of technology. One, we've got to evaluate what are potential use cases that we can utilize that tool within the organization. And then also, there's usually a learning curve. We need to make sure that IT alone is trained on those tools so that we can, again, help retrain staff and help them effectively utilize the tool. Some of our current initiatives, I know we are nearing our end of year, our fiscal year 24. Our work doesn't stop. We continually have projects and initiatives that we're doing, but also items that have previously taken place, like our security assessments, that we're continually evaluating and making sure we're addressing those items that were found on a security report. Our innovation piece, the mobile app, we are integrating our City Bot, which is going to be an AI chatbot tool that allows our residents to ask questions, get information quicker, and navigate that platform a little easier. Our hackathon, we are relaunching that for 60 days. We encourage folks to be on the lookout for that and participate. We didn't get the initial responses that we had hoped, so we're relaunching that, re-envisioned with what requirements we will put on that hackathon. And then Facility Vision, mentioned that briefly. That will affect those in the room here. That is located at our Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. We are deploying sensors so that our residents can go on our dashboard, see if a treadmill is in use, see if a lap pole is in use, see how that facility is being utilized and plan your trip more effectively. Looking ahead, this is FY25 and beyond. We're continuing, again, security is top of mind for us. Making sure that we take that seriously, making sure we're on a continual assessment basis from third-party vendors. We don't assess ourselves. We utilize third-party vendors that are neutral, that do these assessments and help us identify where these gaps are and what we need to address. We've been working on some security partnerships with Nickel Jesus Strike Team. Nickel Jesus is the North Carolina Local Government Information Systems Association. It's the IT group here of local governments, and they've got a strike team that helps respond to incidents. They help you with some of these assessments. So it's a great partnership, and we're looking to utilize them even more. Also, we've just been appointed to the Wake Tech Cybersecurity Advisory Committee that we can help them and their programs, and in turn, help us maybe utilize some of the students and some of the programs that we are deploying. Again, training, one piece to this. It's one of the items we see the most when it comes to town staff, is how can they be more trained on the tools that we utilize? So we want to make sure that we've got the right training in place. So we've adopted a training program that is more on a frequent and routine basis. The AI component here, again, is one of those shiny new tools as far as Gen AI goes. We have been accepted into a GovAI Coalition, which was started by San Jose, California. It's over 200 local governments, county and state as well, and over 500 participants, including vendors. And it's really helping us navigate and identify shared use cases. And it's a great group that meets monthly. The use case group meets monthly as well, and it really helps us navigate this space, helps us navigate and evaluate vendors, and really helps making sure we're put in policy and governance and forefront as well. We do have a Gen AI pilot. Again, part of that will be from the City Bot integration, but we're also doing something internal as well that will help staff, again, better serve residents, get information quicker instead of having to wait and get them that information at a later date. We will continue with the More Ideas Platform, which is part of our Smart City program. That really is a crowdsourcing mechanism to get great ideas from our community, from all around the country, to help really accelerate what we're doing in that Smart City program. The engagement here is really working with our residents. We have a Smart City Steering Committee. It's a full of 11 residents that help guide our Smart City program. They help evaluate different services that we offer and help provide that feedback. The digital literacy piece really revolves around our senior digital literacy program. It really helps us. One thing that we heard in a Morrisville 101 class was that some of our seniors in the community don't know the tools that we offer, and they don't know how to use them. So we want to take that to heart. We want to meet them where they're at and help them understand what we offer and how they can benefit from it as well. And then our Smart Morrisville Program, again, redefining what that innovation means, re-establishing that strategic plan, and moving to that next phase. And all that to get to our accomplishments, we're very proud, again, what this group has done and what we have accomplished. We've migrated and transitioned from our .org to our .gov. That's both on our email and our websites. One big lift that happens every year is hardware replacements. As we have aging hardware, it's important to stay ahead and make sure we minimize downtime. Some highlights from the Smart Morrisville Program. We hosted and partnered with Norwich University to host an IoT training. That was for both public and private sector. We had a great turnout and great feedback from that program. We did participate in the HBCU Smart Cities Challenge, which was in partnership with Pathway Foundation. You had groups of HBCU students that participated in solving Morrisville problem statements. One of the groups did win third place in that competition at Winston-Salem State University with a cash prize for MasterCard. It was a great organization and great to see young minds start to solve problems for local government. The mobile app, we have released that mobile app Phase 3A. Anyone can download that. It's Morrisville Central in the app stores. That feature set that came with 3A update is the Smart City Dashboard, so you can customize your dashboard, so you can see status of tennis courts, status of EV chargers. You can build that dashboard for what is relevant to you. We also added a garbage recycling feature, where you can see when your trash pickup day is. You can see what to recycle, how to recycle. Let's say we partnered with Sustainability to make sure that folks had that at their fingertips. And then last piece here is the awards. This recognition is great. Again, it validates what we're doing by third parties. A couple pieces here, we were awarded the Future Enterprise Best in Future of Connectedness by IBC. We were awarded the Innovation and Leadership by GovTech. And then, most recently, the CIO 100 Award. That award recognizes innovative teams across both public and private sectors. So this is someone that we got recognized alongside Pfizer and other big-name companies, which is, we're very proud of. We actually were one of 11 of the 100 that have been invited to present at the symposium in August. So we will be there presenting with these billion-dollar companies, which we're very proud of the innovation and what our team has accomplished. So you've heard from me. What are others saying? These are all quotes from either surveys that we received, from feedback that was given to us randomly. And this shows, these are all separate folks. These are all about different folks and about the team as a whole. This, I could go for three more slides with this, of the great things that the organization has been saying about this team. They really know what they're doing. They care about the folks that they serve. They take customer service seriously, and it's important to them. So it's great to see that feedback and the nice things that everyone is saying about this group. Lastly, I know with the Public Works presentation, it was great to hear that they are first responders. And we love supporting our heroes, but even sometimes heroes need heroes. So this group, again, works tirelessly to help support these individuals that are 24/7. We are on-call on a 24/7 basis. We have a lot of after-hours work that goes behind the scene that people do not recognize. We have late nights till 4:00 AM, and you'll see that illustrated here in another piece shortly. But this group, they are very dedicated in making sure that they are here when no one else is. And it's important to recognize that, because no one sees that they're here, plugging away, making sure that we're as secure as we can and updating our systems. All right, so with that, here's just a few pictures. And before I get into questions, I want to go ahead to our department presentation or our apartment video, where we illustrate some of the heroism.
In a world where lines blur between reality and imagination. Jack thought he knew the difference between dreams and reality.
This will be an easy target.
But when his dreams become his battleground.
Jack, we need you here. We're under attack.
Oh, all right, yeah. I'll be right there. What?
Thank goodness you're here. There's a virus attack in us.
No, you gotta be kidding. What's going on?
He must confront his deepest fears.
You can't stop us, Jack.
We're everywhere.
From the depths of his dreams to the heart of the digital battlefield.
You didn't think I was gonna fall for that, did you?
With that, happy to field any questions.
Does anyone want to share any thoughts? I just want to say thank you so much and congratulations, all your hard work getting recognized internationally even. It's really incredible. Councilmember Al?
Yeah. Thank you so much. Marvel's has the Avengers and Morrisville has the innovators. And I really mean that. I mean, anywhere we go in the region, any of us, our state, people talk about our awards and everything we're doing. So I just want to thank you all so much for your strong leadership, particularly in the Smart Cities area. I just want to get your feedback about what we can be, how we can be more supportive of, you know, for example, grant opportunities. We have a lot of, you know, really big companies like IBM, Cisco, you know, that are probably promoting Smart City grants. So has there been, I know we've gotten some grants for other things, but now that we're national leaders, how do we get the best in the industry to start investing lots of money into town of Morrisville technology?
Yeah, so we're always exploring different grant opportunities. A lot with technology is about broadband and more underserved areas. We don't meet a lot of the criteria when it comes to some of the grants. We are exploring one around transportation that is due in July. Again, just depending if we meet some of that criteria. A lot is about job creation, and so it's tough for us to meet some of that, but it is something that we explore. So if we can use federal funds to innovate, we try to. One of the good things about being recognized is that folks want to work with us. So we are a recognized leader in the space. Folks want to come in, want to do pilots, want to try to do business with us. So we're able to do a lot for little, which is great. We have a lot of opportunities that we wouldn't otherwise. So it's awesome to be recognized because it does give us those opportunities.
And as a follow-up, the only thing I would add is I think that because there's so much excitement around, you know, More Ideas and all these different programs, I think it's a great economic development tool as well to recruit a lot of these startups to come in with their ideas. So typically, they're in Raleigh and Durham, but hopefully the work that your team is doing in Morrisville and the town, we can have more of those startups and entrepreneurs come here, which I think feeds well into our downtown plans and other things. So just food for thought. I know a lot of entrepreneurs are reaching out to me all the time, how do I get ahold of Rick? And so, but I think having more of a formal program might make it easier for you as well in terms of like, these are the problems and, you know, this is, you know, how we'd like you to come in and share your ideas with us, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And that is the purpose of really that More Ideas Program. It just takes some time to really get moving on some of these items, but definitely.
I'm ready to go home now.
Okay, Councilmember Rabbay, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Thanks for a great presentation, especially the video. So what type of training have you been able to equip the staff with in terms of AI usage and use cases?
So, yeah, so this year, we've adopted an AI policy that helps at least govern and determine what and how our staff can utilize these tools. And so part of that policy incorporates training. So we are required to do training each year with staff on these tools, help them understand how to use it and how to use it effectively, but also safely. So we do go through that training. We do that in-house, but we also, with different types of training, we bring third-party training vendors in as well. Again, they can hear it from us till we're blue in the face, but sometimes it's great to hear it from a third party. So we do training as part of that policy in that program.
And does that training include a component of ethical AI use?
It does.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, thank you, Rick. Everything, the presentation was fabulous, and I'm really thrilled that the whole team is here because you said it, you are the unsung heroes that are behind the scenes all the time, but you are the folks that keep this organization running. And I'm really, I'm really happy that the public gets to meet you all tonight and hear about all that you do, because we are obviously all incredibly proud of the work that you do. And just so the public knows, our, every department is coming before council to give us an update on the work that they're doing and any challenges they have in future endeavors. And they've also each created a video. So it's really become a competition now to see which video, and you all did a fabulous job. So I won't say who won. I don't think anybody wins, but all the videos have been wonderful, but this one was very cute. Lot of hidden pictures there in the background, so I love that. So thank you all for all you do. I guess the only question I have is cyber threats. You know, we know that that's becoming more and more of an issue. Is there anything more we can do? Is there anything you need help with in that area? Because that is clearly challenging for not just governments, but corporations, just all of us, even the personal folks and their personal computers. So just anything you might want to add about cyber threats?
Exactly. We see the amount of cyber threats that we face each year continue to climb. It's important for us to not only deploy technology to help defeat that. I think that's important, obviously, but a lot of it is the user education, helping our staff, the town staff, understand the importance of cybersecurity, understand what to look out for. This is not something that they do every day, so we want to help them understand what could potentially be malicious, what they need to look out for if something does get through our defenses. So that's one of the biggest components that you can do, is making sure that staff is educated on the topic, because this is not something that they deal with every day.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Appreciate all you do. Thank you.
And just to expand on that, like, you mentioned 700 hours in-house in your department in training. Do you track by department how much training they're getting as well? I know the fire department does, obviously, because they do a lot of training.
Yeah, so that 700 hours, that was IT staff training, so us going to different types of training, because technology changes often, as everyone knows. So it's important for us to stay ahead of that so that we can help train town staff. So the 700 hours is what we track for internal, but we make sure that we utilize funds effectively to get effective training. So we've set a training program up that includes a couple in-house training from a third party. It does two webinars each year and a couple luncheon learns for town staff. So we have identified the most effective way to do that training based on feedback we've received previously, and we're going to highlight some of the tools that the town uses the most and that we've gotten more feedback from.
Okay. And I did really like the video and a lot of the little Easter eggs in there, kind of made me hungry for doughnuts for a part of that. So do you have a couple of department goals that you're really striving for?
Yeah, so obviously, with the customer satisfaction score, we're very proud of that, but it's not something that we hang our hat on. It's, we're not done here. We still have room for improvement. We want to make sure that we are addressing these concerns that town staff might have. But again, we also want to make sure that we're effectively communicating with our town staff. That's one piece that we do hear back quite often, is communication and how we communicate with folks. We might communicate too much, we might not communicate enough. We're technologists, so it's sometimes hard for us to communicate. It's easy for us to just do. So that's something that we want to make sure that we effectively communicate, again, to help drive the usage of these tools. We feel that this technology should be a resource for our staff, not a burden. So we want to make sure that we are, as much as we can, providing them the training on those tools and educating them how to use it effectively.
Yeah, making it seamless and just foundational for the entire town. And if you all have not downloaded Morrisville Central, please do. Lots of great information, and you can help us get to the next phase as well. Well, thank you very much to you and your entire team. Thank you for being here this evening. Hopefully, everything's still intact as you get back to work. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we're moving towards public address, so we'll give a couple minutes for the room to clear now that the real presentation is done. So we'll start with public address. So this is not the budget public hearing. So the town clerk, Spillane, will now present any public comments received.
I apologize, Deputy Town Clerk Bianca Wool.
Okay, Deputy Town Clerk Wool.
So we have three individuals to speak tonight, Linda Lyons, Subha Reddy, and Vindhan Patel.
Okay. Just want to be clear that this is public address, this is not the public hearing. So if you want to speak about the budget, that would be the next item. So if you could please state your name and your residential address for the record, you'll have three minutes. And when it reaches three minutes, if you would please finish that thought and conclude. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Linda Lyons. I live at 1005 Church Street. I am requesting the town revisit the procedures for policies on public hearings. In the last three to four years, a few concerned citizens have been putting in a lot of effort and spending their own monies and time to inform the citizens of public hearings that they are not aware of, especially those that involve our hard-earned money. We spent close to $1,500 to $2,000 on one public hearing, and that is a lot of money to incur between three to four people. We communicate by knocking on doors, we purchase signs, we make cards, we use our phones, we also use gas for our cars. This is something we should not have to be tasked with. This is the town responsibility, and I would like to know, do the town have provisioning for reimbursing any citizens or group who incur expenses while serving the community in such a capacity? And if not, maybe you can propose such a policy in the future. I know with trash pickup, bulk pickup, the town uses automated phones to call, to inform citizens of what can be picked up at the curb and the date it picked up. We need to realize not everyone in the community have access to regular use of digital means of communication like emails or website. I know we used to have a newsletter to communicate to the citizen, but we no longer have. The news channel is a good way of getting information out to the public, as I saw with other towns publicizing their budget, activities, and the proposed tax increase. I hope that you will find ways to better inform citizens on public hearing and to be more transparent. And I also want to bring up concerning the town, I know, like, in the past, the town purchased land for the town purpose, I guess, but I would like to know what do you have in the future, purpose is for the town that you purchased, for the land that you purchased? If I could find that out later, not now, but I would like to find. I know we purchased land a long time ago, and I have not heard of any future plans for that land, and I would like to know the future plans for that land. Okay, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Subha Reddy, 113 Allen Haven Way, Westport Community. I want to bring a couple of points to the town attention. I'm the small-scale business owner and entrepreneur, so with that mindset, when I've been associated with a lot of startup entrepreneurs who are visionary, very passionate, so we are, I feel that there is a lack of support from the town. This is my personal perception, don't get me wrong, because we call it as a Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, but if you pull the records, how many residents who are part, living in the Morrisville, who has a small-scale businesses, how many families are part of it? It is our taxpayers' money, Morrisville Chamber of Commerce system, but when it do the audit, how many families are part of that system? How many startup, hometown startups are part of it? Moreover, I want to emphasize, because one of my motivation statement is, we call it the women minority empowerment, small-scale businesses. Morrisville based lot of women minority-based small-scale businesses are there, like tax consulting, stitching machines, like pizza. So how many women minority-based entrepreneurs are part of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce? That's a question we need to put ourselves. We need to revisit that Morrisville Chamber of Commerce system to involve the more Morrisville residents, small-scale business owner, to empower them so that they will pay back to the, our town. So because the more empower the Morrisville Town small-scale businesses, women minority-based business owners, that will town again enlightened. So my request is again to the, to review and include the lot of residents, Morrisville residents into the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, waive off the fee, because when I want to go to the event, that is $75. I cannot even think I would take it easy, though I'm already paying taxes, I got to go there and associate it, and it's painful when I see that and it's not accessible, those resources for us. Thank you very much.
Good evening to the council and to the community. I'm, my name is Vindhan Patel. I'm from 223 Trolley Car Way, and I'm here on behalf of the Hindu community. It's our immense pleasure and joy to invite the town of Morrisville and the community to our upcoming celebration in the Great International Day of Yoga, and share the various events and efforts undertaken by the Hindu community in our area. We actively celebrate diverse events and festivals throughout the year, such as Teachers' Appreciation Day, Seva Diwali, and Raksha Bhanthan, and many more. These celebrations foster unity and spread love and joy within our community. In May 2024, we celebrated Teachers' Appreciation Day. Teachers play an integral role in our society and in our lives, and in this event, we provide an opportunity to appreciate their invaluable contributions to educating our children. Many teachers from surrounding schools of Wake County have attended this event, expressing their gratitude and support for such initiatives. We also participated in Seva Diwali, a food drive campaign for local food pantries, aimed at supporting those in need in our community. The initiative helps ensure that local food pantries are well-stocked and are able to assist families who require support. Additionally, we celebrate Raksha Bhanthan as Universal Oneness Day, where we appreciate our first responders, town administrators, and staff. This event symbolizes our gratitude and respect for those who are fostering a sense of unity and mutual appreciation. Our next event is the International Day of Yoga, recognized by the United Nations and celebrated worldwide. Yoga is an ancient practice that involves physical and mental, physical, mental, and spiritual, which has originated in India. The word yoga is derived from Sanskrit, which means to join or to unite, symbolizing the union of the body and the consciousness. This year marks the 10th anniversary of the International Day of Yoga, which aims to raise awareness for the numerous benefits of practicing yoga. Our community will celebrate this event on June 23 at 8:00 AM at the HSNC Center, located at 309 Aviation Parkway, Morrisville. We look forward to your continued support and participation in these events as we strive to make a positive contribution to our community.
Deputy Town Clerk, was there anyone else signed up for public address?
No, there's no one else signed up.
Okay. Was there anyone here in the room who wanted to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject that's not a public hearing tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearings, number 11. Tonight, we have three public hearings. FY 2025 Recommended Annual Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. The the Approval of the Transit Oriented Development and Zoning Plan, and the Duke Energy Progress LLC Special Use Permit. Town Manager Brandon Zudema will come forward to facilitate the first item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the time tonight. So we are here for a continued public hearing on the recommended FY 2025 budget. Before we get into that, have some additional information to share. I'm going to ask Jeannie to share the updated information from the budget portal. So you have that in front of you. Jeannie, we have now how many responses? Sorry, should have asked that before I asked you to go that direction.
So in the budget portal, we're up to twenty five responses. And a combination of town council emails, direct emails, and to the budget portal, a budget email, we were up to thirty three.
And then also would ask the Clerk's Office to share there has also been a petition submitted that we want to make you aware of as well.
Yes, we did receive a petition with three hundred sixty one signatures. I will read it. This is from or started by Jackie Hulkhome. And it reads, "Our neighbors may well be taxed out of their longtime homes. Small businesses will feel the brunt as well. The proposed twenty percent tax increase in Morrisville will impact residents who have been a part of our town for years. This drastic hike is unaffordable for many families, seniors, and retirees on fixed income. According to recent data, property taxes have already increased by fifteen percent over the past three years, source Town of Morrisville Annual Budget Report. A further increase will only exacerbate financial strain and disrupt our tight knit community. We urge the mayor and town council to reconsider this proposal and find alternative solutions that do not displace our residents and small businesses. Please sign this petition to protect our homes and keep Morrisville a community where we can indeed live connected."
That's the additional information we have for you, Mayor. You have an open public hearing.
Okay. As this public hearing has been continued, any members of the community who spoke at the previous public hearing on May 28 are not permitted to speak again tonight. Now recognized Deputy Clerk, do you have anyone signed up to speak on this item this evening? And I just want to say that we have a policy that we hear a public hearing up to thirty minutes, and then we'll see where we are. How many people are actually signed up for three minutes each?
We have nine individuals.
Nine individuals, okay. That's wonderful. If you're coming up and you find that everything that's been, has already been said, you can just go ahead and say, I echo what I've already heard. Or if you want to have people who are in the audience that you're with, like stand at the beginning of your speech to sort of indicate the support for an item, please do. I would ask just to keep the decorum of our meeting, to keep the applause to a minimum. I know I've sort of already let that happen a little bit. But we just want to, this is a proper public hearing. This is a town council meeting, so we just want to keep nice decorum. But we're going to give a little latitude. We want to hear from you. That's why we extended this hearing. So if you want to call the first three speakers, maybe have them line up. Once again, you'll have three minutes. If you're exceeding the three minutes, I'd ask you to please just finish that thought. If you have additional thoughts, you can send us an email. And we appreciate all the emails we've already gotten. We appreciate the petition that we've heard.
Yes, the first three speakers are Dora and Louise Tarver, as well as Jeanette Conley and Patty Chain. If you could please come up.
And as I mentioned, please your name and your residential address for the record. Appreciate it.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this time to.
Come a little closer to the mic, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come and speak about the twenty percent increase in our community. I've been living in this community for twenty six years, and I'm all for changes and improvements. That's okay. Okay. And I'm all for changes and improvements for the community. However, we've been receiving taxes from Wake County. Now we're going to get this twenty percent increase from, you know, our community here. All the prices for food, everything's just going up. And it's really a hardship for seniors that all they are living on is social security. And so I'm even, I even approve like a five percent over the next four years. But at twenty percent at this time, I think is a lot for our seniors to be able to handle. So if you would just take this into consideration, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. If you could please state your name and your residential address for the record. We really appreciate it.
Okay, it's Jeanette Conley, and I live at 1123 Kudrow Lane at the Preston Creek Side condos.
Thank you so much.
I'm Patty Chain. I'm a recent town council candidate, living at 304 Mellett Drive. I'm here to remind our town council and staff what Morrisville residents were promised less than three years ago when your constituents were asked to approve the town's largest tax increase of thirty seven million dollars in bonds to be paid over twenty years' time. Morrisville also had a bond referendum in 2005, where the twenty year two cent tax increase ends in 2025. Since those bonds citizens agreed to pay have been paid off after twenty years. The 2025 budget seems to expect your constituents to continue to pay the 2005 bonds after, even after they've been paid off. For the 2021 bonds, here's your brochure that was widely distributed less than three years ago. Let's see. Well, okay. Town council told citizens these bonds would pay for new tennis courts and pickleball courts at the community park, the sidewalks and greenway connectivity, which I believe is pretty much done. And then the Harris Mill Fire Station, which is completed and open to the public. The thirty seven million dollars, also besides the eight million for the new fire station, there's a note about land acquisition for more fire stations. The town of Morrisville has more, by far, more fire stations per capita than the town of Cary does. And we have ten square miles of property that is enclosed in three sides. Why we need more land for other fire stations, I don't know. I believe the Craft Tree Creek Nature Park was dismissed, canceled late last year. And we already have parcel parkland that is near Airport Boulevard, which has not been designed or developed in any way. And yet you're looking to acquire more parkland for who knows what. The traffic congestion improvements, I haven't seen any evidence of because most of the traffic congestion in the town of Morrisville centers around the state roads by which this town was developed. And then you should remember that prior to 2018, Morrisville had two hundred and fifty million dollars of committed funds from the North Town Department of Transportation and Campo Regional Funding for the roads around Morrisville, which are state roads. Town council promised to raise taxes to support the Airport Boulevard Extension in 2021. To this date, I've seen nothing about how the Airport Boulevard will go under the railroad tracks or if they will go over the railroad tracks by, in which case, the gas stations would have to be sacrificed.
Thank you so much.
Our money doesn't grow on trees, and we don't have multimillion dollar trust funds. So let's be realistic about increasing our taxes by more than two or three million this year. To now you're asking for an extra eight point seven million?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Subaradi, Ravinder Gada Pelli, Sir Rig Naraha. If you could please come up.
Your name and address again, please, for the record, sir. Thank you.
So my name is Subaradi, 113 Alhavon Way, Morrisville. So I like to say Morrisville because whenever I go work or wherever in the town, even the not Karlena, I know tomorrow, I have tomorrow, I'm going to the DC. So I'm proud to say that I'm Morrisville resident. So because we have the statement keep here from our loved mayor, Morrisville live, connect, and live well. So that's a good statement. Saying that, so I would like to ask to oppose this increase. So whoever is supporting, they can stand up. Rather, I would say this not opposing, I'm requesting to change this. Because why can't we ask to decrease the taxes? Right? So because when we are talking to increase the taxes, there is a, we need to consider the disproportionate sector also. Because Morrisville is not only the people who pay the higher taxes. There are teachers. We talk about affordable houses. When we talk about affordable houses, why can't we talk about the affordable taxes also? Because Morrisville, last time when we here, Morrisville has a lot of businesses where they can do the business they're doing and multimillion businesses. Why can't we utilize those resources well and consider the residents to decrease the tax and help them by finding the alternative resources, cost effective options by using the town based interns where they can provide the opportunities for them? Because it's a win win situation when we use the Morrisville resources and use the cost effective budget where? Because we can, we can help you in that stream if we can set up the, how best we can utilize the budget because we want to help the town at the end. So that's the reason I propose to think about the decreasing the tax instead of increasing. And also, we need to consider that there are a couple of the items where we need to focus this budget utilization. When you consider the options, public safety and also affordable houses, affordable where the schools and parks, all those things here. Yeah, we don't need to envision super, not super city here. So by focusing those areas, now we are, we want to increase the budget, but tax. So first, think about the local residents, what they needed. Right? So that's where that the statement is here, someone hand over to me. Again, I want to read this. Morrisville live, connect, and live well, live within our means. Thank you very much for giving this opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Klimak. I live at 141 Walton's Creek Road. Twenty seven years old, and this is actually my first town hall meeting I've been to. So I appreciate you letting me speak in place of Robbie. So I am a homeowner also. I've lived in Morrisville for twenty seven years, and I actually bought a house in the same neighborhood that I grew up in back in 2019. It was a lot easier to, you know, buy a house in 2019 when the interest rates were lower, inflation was lower, and I got lucky that I was able to, you know, get a good deal before COVID and the economic, you know, difficulties that we're facing today. But people my age who are looking to buy a home now, they're not as fortunate. I read an article somewhere saying that inflation has risen twenty percent in the last four years. Property, home, property prices have risen twenty five percent. On top of that, we have now a twenty percent increase in the property tax rate. It's just on and on and on, more expenses that young people, and not just young people, but you know, anyone who's looking to buy a home or move to a different home, that they have to incur. And it's, I would ask the town council to consider in light of all of the different, you know, financial difficulties that people are experiencing, in light of, you know, people having to delay, you know, buying a home because of the additional price due to interest rates, property taxes, inflation, to consider pushing off with the property tax increase until the economy is doing better. Thank you, and thank everyone for showing up for this meeting.
Good evening. My name is Resh Narai. I live in 803 Willingham Road. Been a Morrisville resident for twenty two years. Very happy with this town, very happy with the council. My point is if I am driving on the road and I see a sign, your tax is going to increase by twenty percent, I'm in a shock. Why would I get an information from the roadside telling me that my tax is going to get increased? So I agree with this lady who spoke before me about the process. We need to have a process to inform the residents. What are we doing? And like this lady pointed out, this lot of money being spent on stuff which doesn't even matter to us. I have been in the US for forty years, almost. Twenty years in San Diego and twenty years over here. I love this place, but I do not want to get surprises. What is the process? Why are we paying? And what is happening with that money? Also, when you say twenty percent increase in tax, what is a tax? What are we paying right now? I don't know. Also, if you go in and do a Google search, we are eighteen percent, Morrisville is eighteen percent more on the national average for property tax. So why are we paying? So my question, and again, I want to understand what are we going to do for the future? Do we still keep increasing the tax at random, being spent on things at random? Or are we going to concentrate and make people like this place and live? That's all. Thank you.
Dear council members and respected audience, thanks for giving an opportunity to speak about regarding tax increase on the properties. This is the first time I'm speaking in the council. Well, already we are suffering with the federal government interest rates. You know, the current president, Mr. Joe Biden, already increasing every, every month our tax property, I mean, our interest rates. They're already suffering with the property, I mean, interest rates. They are paying a lot of interest on our properties. And apart from that, last two years, NCA has increased the taxes on the property. And the property tax and property valuation also increased. Actually, the primary residents, we don't care. It is not our investment houses. The houses which we bought is for living. Living houses is not required to, you know, increase the property value. Because we are not the business people to sell the property. We have the people to live better, live in the town and enjoy in the town, enjoy the parks, enjoy the community which we have, not the, not the increases of our values, property values. And initially, you know, how they implemented is first increase the property tax, then increase the property value. Now they are increasing the town. Now they are increasing the town level, our town level property increases. Means we are paying more, more, more indirectly, indirectly sucking our blood. The government is sucking our blood in the federal level, the state level, the town level. These are all doing in the democratic government is doing it. It is a sequential orderly democratic government, democrat government is doing, taking our blood. Okay, so which we need to understand it, how it is happening from the federal to the town level. So I request the council to not increase the property tax in primary houses as well as senior citizens. Senior citizens are living this town, they're respected for us. We have to respect them because they worked for us, they made money, they paid social security taxes, they retired. Now we are asking them to pay the taxes, property taxes and other taxes. Our responsibility is we need to, we need to take out the taxes for the senior citizens. Senior citizens, we have to give the privilege to them to take out the taxes. That is should come from, start from the North Carolina and it from Morrisville town, Morrisville town, Morrisville town council come out and say that we have to wipe out the taxes to the senior citizens and investment properties, businesses, you can increase the taxes no matter, because we are enjoying investment property people, they are enjoying here, they are, they are taking the money out of it and increase the tax on them. But senior citizens don't take the taxes and whatever that, whatever the property taxes are collecting the town, give them and respecting them and take them out. That is our request from the senior citizens. And also, primary houses, primary houses, town homes and people are unaffordable living, like I mean, small houses, old houses, those who, 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 who were, been living quite long time, they are paying like, I mean, you know, came here for proper, I mean, you know, enjoyment and enjoy the, this environment, for them it is okay. Those who come for here, those who come for here for investment properties, you can increase 20% or 30%, doesn't matter. Primary living and senior citizens, please don't increase the tax. That's what my request.
Thank, thank you, sir. Wait, wait. If you would please provide your name and your residential address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
Please provide it right in the speaker.
Ravinder Gaddampalli. I live in Wexford. My address is 104 Paxford Court, Morrisville, NC 27560.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
So you'll hear the little ding at three minutes and if you could just finish your thought, we'd really appreciate it. Deputy Town Clerk, next speakers.
Yes, the next three speakers are Lauren Butler, Daniel Rabbit and Chad Morvenstein. If you could please come up.
Hi, I'm Lauren Butler at 112 Lee Croftway. I love living here. I love our town council, I love our town. But I have been on the planet Earth for seven decades. And if we raise taxes, have you ever seen them go down? It's hard. We had a little bit of increase in our social security this year, so we got a little bit more. Gee, that's great. But then we went to the grocery store. That was hard. But things will equal out. I'm also on the senior center board committee there. And so I'm with seniors every week, often, frequently, and listening to their challenges. I happen to be one of the lucky ones. I have a darling husband, so we have two incomes coming into our home. But for those of my friends that are widows, they don't have that. I remember a committee meeting that we had not terribly long ago where we had a little impromptu survey by town council member saying, what does senior housing look like in Morrisville? And there was kind of a old lady grunt came out of the audience and said, it doesn't look like Morrisville. Because if we hadn't bought our homes at least 10 years ago, we wouldn't be buying a home here. We couldn't, we couldn't buy a home here. That's the bottom line. So seniors represent 14% of Morrisville. We're an important and vital part of our community. We have a lovely community center for the seniors. We appreciate that very much. We have opportunities to socialize and be together. But all of us are talking about how hard thing, how hard it is to make ends meet. Every time we go to our Medicare annual physical, our physicians ask us, do you have food insecurities? Do you have housing insecurities? Do you have safety insecurities? The federal government wants to know these things. I know you want to know these things. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Rabbit. I live at 1203 Denmark Manor Drive. So I'm in the Shiloh Grove neighborhood. And in fact, I was actually one of the first people to move into that. I think there were like three families that were living there already when I took possession of that. Some people have come and gone and I, I've stayed, I'd like to stay if I can afford to do so. But I gotta say, when I looked at this budget and tax increase, I didn't see something that looked like it was made for the residents. I think that it looked like something that, okay, if you were to reading the residents of the town about the priorities, I don't think it would look like that. And I think people easy to say that, oh yeah, but these are nice to have, it's nice to add these things. Yeah, people say they like that if they can afford it. I think we're learning tonight that these things really aren't in the budget for us. And that's the issue. The budget might be attractive to some other people, perhaps like outside investors. And I think somebody made this up and mentioned this, that yeah, someone who can't afford the taxes anymore, sell their home, someone who's not connected to Morrisville can swoop in, buy that up. You know, they can charge a high rent to help cover that. And that's it. That means that you've displaced the long term resident or homeowner with someone who's really not tied to the community and maybe, you know, like I said, stopped by the check on the lawn, you know, once a year or something like that. But I do want, I don't want to be too negative because I really think that this is an opportunity for you. And I really want you to think about the legacy that you're setting here. Because you're making a decision. Are we, what are our priorities? Are we listening to the residents and we can say that, yeah, we got the feedback and we realized that this was a chance to put the residents first? Or did we say that, you know, no, like I said, we made up our minds long before. And so please think about that, that legacy. Because as people have said before, once the taxes are there, I don't see them coming down. And people want to know, when did this happen? Who did this? So think a little bit about, when you look back and people think of what did the city council do? And what were your priorities? And who did you put first? And I really hope it's going to be for the people who are living here and want to keep living here. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Chad Morvenstern. I live in 1805 Glid Valley Lane. I've known many of you for a very long time. I've had many in my home multiple times. First start out by saying I'm, I'm opposed to this tax increase. I myself can afford it. I've been very fortunate over the years. My salary has increased with the past and inflation, but that's not the case for many. But I am speaking for myself here, not for, not for the community. Coming from California, from Virginia, where I lived before this, before North Carolina, which is now my home, I have fled those places for many reasons, but primarily because of cost of living. I love my family. I have five daughters and many of you have met them. Liz, TJ, you were at the graduation last night for one of my oldest. I had hoped in living here that my family would stay here and my children could buy homes here in North Carolina. I was very pleased to see that my house, I did not go up over the years until recently. My house remained fairly flat until about three years ago. It's now doubled since the time I purchased the house. And the fact that most has happened last few years is surprising and uncomfortable that my children who grew up here cannot stay here. Some of you might say that other towns in North Carolina and Wade County are also looking to increase their tax rates. That means my children cannot stay in anywhere in Wade County when they leave here. And that's discouraging and discomforting for me to see my family move away and not be able to come back. My house has gone up so much and including that, the, the tax rate that just went up within the last year, that saw my, my property tax double since it bought my house. And that's very uncomfortable. Now we have another 20% on top of that for the town budget, which is outpricing their ability to stay. In my community, I'm, I'm a, I'm a strong churchgoer. My family hasn't, many of you have been to my church or the church I belong to. We are in an unfortunate position where nobody stays. I've been to my congregation for 18 years now and we have a rollover every two years, it seems. I'm one of five families in the church that's been here for more than three years. And the people who come cannot stay. They rent and they leave because they can't afford to stay in Morrisville. It's too expensive. The housing values that's gone up hasn't helped me, right? My tax rate goes up and up and the reassessment comes within nine years from now. Even if our house property values do drop, the tax is still stuck high. Again, it doesn't help me. I've been advised to not try to pay down my mortgage because I have a good interest rate. No one's getting good interest rates anymore. House rates, house prices have gone up as, as been said again and again, right? The last point to make on that is though the value's gone up, the money's locked in, I can't get it out. So I'm being taxed a higher rate for a house that I can't extract any value out of, except the place that I live. It's gone up for the government, it hasn't gone up for me. It hasn't gone up for anybody here. Morrisville is a wonderful town, it's my home. Please think of the residents before you think of the beauty of the town itself. Inflation is out of control and has been postponed and then cut back. Other things such as lawnmowers, electric cars, hybrid vehicles, murals, these are not necessary expenditures at this point. Thank you.
That is all.
Okay. We always give the opportunity, if you didn't sign up, we'll give you the opportunity now to speak for up to three minutes. If there's something that hasn't been said, we would welcome your thoughts. Otherwise, okay. You guys want to just go ahead and line up?
Yes, please give your name and your address and I will place this sign in sheet here after you're done.
Yep, you have five seconds.
Richard Reinhardt, 1437 Spring Garden Drive. I've been a Mooreville resident for about 11 years, 12 at the end of this lease. I rent, which means I can escape if I want to. But why would I want to? I love this town. I love the people in it. I've been a postal carrier in this town. I've seen it grow and the people are so friendly in Morrisville. They always give you the right of way. They always love, they always do the most to accept you, even though you might be different. But what I'm going to say is this 20% increase even affects renters. Because guess who the renter, guess who the owners do? They pass the, the cost on to me. So I still see the, you know, the increase in the rent. But I beg, I know you TJ, Liz, we've talked many times. Steve, I mean, I consider you a friend, Steve, and I've talked to you a few times. I respect you. Please do not do this to us. We do not need to have this community start losing its long term residents. And I mean that. I love you people. I mean, you know, you know, my friends who still work at that post office are going to see more yellow cards of people leaving, people moving, those stickers. It's sad seeing that. You know, and a lot of times they say, the regulars come back and say they're leaving because they can't afford it anymore. And they've been there 10, 15 years. I mean, you know, I, I look at it and my rent's gone up at least probably since I started in 2013, at least probably 40%. I'm guessing that, but that's what I'm seeing right now. I agree wholeheartedly with Patty. Anybody else in here that says we do not need this? We need to be revenue neutral. We cannot have all this excessive spending. We need to think about Morrisville residents first. And, and that's it. I just decided to come up here and speak today because I love this town. Thank you very much.
My name is Leopolda Ramos. I live at 1032 Gold Rock Lane. I live in the Kids Creek neighborhood. I've been a part of this community for, it's going on 18 years. I can't even believe it's been that long. And I'm most concerned about the 20% hike because it impacts, it in, it impacts so many different aspects of our lives. Particularly, I'm most concerned about the impact that it will have to our rich community as it pertains to the rich diversity of people that it brings. This particular hike is going to have a trickle impact on people being able to afford to rent here. I've been fortunate where I was able to buy a home many years ago. And so I've now invested in the community. I'm also concerned about people of color not being able to afford in this area and the impact trickle effect that it will have on our schools and the rich diversity that our schools represent. I love this community. I love what you guys have offered, the, the activities that you do, the diverse, rich activities that are brought about. Most recently, Jum Team, that was great, a fantastic celebration that the town, I thank you for that. I want to continue to build on that. I want our children to be able to learn from each other. And if we impose high taxes, it will have a trickle effect, not only on seniors, but it will have a trickle effect on communities of color as well. And that's something to keep in mind. And I would also would like you to consider the idea of, and I know this has been done in other areas, you know, I've, I've read about that in California, where there might be some level of grandfather in terms of taxes for people that actually need it. This includes seniors at a particular, with a particular, within a particular income bracket that might allow them to stay here as well as families that might be single parent homes that may not be able to afford to stay within their homes. I'm very fortunate that I can, you know, that I've been able to maintain my family here and I hope that they're able to grow up, you know, be able to raise their own families here and have their own. This is a beautiful town, a very diverse and rich town. And I will like to continue it, continue to build upon that. And so I ask that you consider that.
Thank you. If you could please fill out your name and address, ma'am, on the sheet. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Day and I live at 1101 Denmark Manor Drive. Everything that I've, I feel has already been said, but I just want to say this. I've been a homeowner since 2009. I retired in 2012. We need affordable housing. I need to be able to afford my housing and we need a standalone senior center. Thank you.
If there's no one else, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion from Councilmember Fender, a second from Councilmember Rabadi. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for the FY 2025 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you to everyone for sharing your thoughts. At this time, I would love to hear from fellow council members about discussion. We are scheduled to vote on this this evening. I'll start off with Councilmember Rabadi, please.
A lot of thought and a lot of work goes into our budget discussions. And one of the things that we factor in are things that we hear from our community time after time, year after year, we all hear it. We want more parks. We want traffic calming measures. We want, we don't want apartments everywhere. And a budget is always a balancing act. And in this budget, we started with our core values and we whittled down everything that we did not feel was going to make Morrisville a better town. I, I hear what everyone is saying. Taxes are going up. It's going to be difficult for people. I, I hear that. That weighs on me. But when I look at our budget and I see more fire people, more police, an economic development person, which we need, money for land acquisition, money being put aside for projects that we know we're going to have to do in the future. I, I believe in this budget, and I intend to vote for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson, please.
So first, I want to say thank you to everyone in this room that gave input and feedback. Many of you are friends and neighbors, even John Klimick. I've known his parents, and I knew him when he was a child. So I appreciate John being here to speak. I think everyone that spoke two weeks ago and that spoke tonight, all but maybe one. I think I know all of you and have chatted with you over the years and met with you. So I thank you for your input and your feedback on this budget. I also thank the residents during the last weeks and months who've reached out, or even over the year, who have reached out and shared their desires for this community. And so we're all on the same kind of level here. We up here all love this town, too. There is no way, there is no way, and some of you are former elected officials in the audience. There is no way you can sit up here and serve if you don't love this community and want to do the best for all 32,000 people for now and for the future and for any of the future residents that may come here. We all love this community. And what we do every year as a council, when it comes to budget, is incredible, an incredible and an enormous responsibility every year. And I will tell you, this year is an exception. Four years ago was an exception, and four years before that was an exception because of this added dimension of reevaluation. That adds in even, if it can be even, I don't know what word to use that's more than enormous. It is an incredible responsibility that I certainly have not taken lightly for 25 years. And I know my fellow council members do not take it lightly this year either. This community is what it is today. And you all tonight and two weeks ago and over weeks and months have talked about all the things you love about this community. This community is what it is because councils over the years have invested and made happen the amenities and the services that we all use. And I hear you. Some of you said these are services or amenities that I don't need and I don't want. I hear you. We hear you. But there are others in this community that have expressed a desire for enhanced services and amenities, for more parks. I think everyone would agree, maybe not, maybe I shouldn't say everyone, but a lot of people would agree we need to continue to invest in our transportation issues, our intersection improvements. All of that is included in this budget. It's, it's, you all have, again, anybody who's expressed concern, I hear you. I, I'm a senior citizen too on a fixed income, so I get it. But I, there are certain services I enjoy in this town. And, and the other residences in this town have come accustomed to a certain level of service that we offer. And the inflation that we all are feeling personally, that I am feeling personally as a government entity, we are feeling that too. And for us to be able to continue to offer the level of service, that weighs heavily on, on us, and that's included in this budget as well as adding to, and Councilmember Robati did a great job talking about the investments to come, the enhancements in our public safety, again, our transportation, our parks. I get it. Not everybody uses our parks. But we hear constantly about the need for additional amenities, for more parks, for more pickleball, for more tennis courts. All that takes an investment. And so again, I think great care has been taken to minimize the financial impact to our residents. And at the same time, continue to provide a level of service that our residents expect as well as adding, adding new services and amenities. And, and I, and I'll just end with this. A budget, this budget or any budget is a commitment to the public that we will continue to provide what we've all become accustomed to and continue to invest. And, and just, actually, I'm going to, now, I highlighted a couple of things. I just want to make sure I clarified too. Regardless of what this council does tonight, you all have been listened to. Your concerns are not concerns that we have not thought of. This budget conversation started in January. And a lot of what you all have talked about has been discussed at council level two. So for whatever that's worth, I know that is, that is the truth. And I think this budget is a legacy. And it is an opportunity to continue to improve this town that we all love. And I think the budget, the budget is, does reflect the priorities of our community. And again, I understand not everybody feels that way. But we have done some serious listening over weeks and months and, and have tried to prioritize as, as best we could. And then, and one, one other thing, I, there were a couple of speakers that talked about the fact that maybe we can grandfather seniors or, you know, help them. We do not have the authority to do that. I will tell you, I would love to do that. I would love to have a different tax rate based on income level or fixed income or I heard, single family. We do not have the authority to do that. So, you know, in some ways, our hands are tied too in that regard, obviously, in that regard, in that regard only. And so I guess that, that's all the, the comments I wanted to make tonight. But, and I mentioned this two weeks ago, again, I realize this is not going to help, it's not going to help. All the municipalities in the area, not, I said two weeks ago in Wake County, but all of them in the triangle are considering going over revenue neutral. We are not increasing your taxes 20%, so I'm not sure where that figure came from. That, that is incorrect. It is not a 20% increase. All municipalities are, have budgets proposed that will go over revenue neutral and some far, far higher than what this council is considering. And we actually, again, see what council decides on at the end of the night. If we move forward, we will still be one of the lowest tax rates in the area, in not only Wake County, but in the triangle. So again, I know that's not comforting to a lot of folks, but just know that that mattered. Certainly mattered to me, as I mentioned two weeks ago. This very issue was on my mind, front and center when we started budget discussions in January. And I brought it up multiple times over multiple meetings when we talked about budget. And and I just, again, appreciate everybody's input very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Skrogan Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all who came out and spoke this evening. We do hear you. And I understand, or maybe more than you realize, where you're coming from. Just on a personal note, I will, I mean, the, the property tax affects all of us the same as it does our residents. And I will let, tell you that with my, you know, the, the town council isn't the only thing I do all day. I do have a full-time job. And last year, I didn't, our business unit, because of bad performance, our business unit did not get a raise. My, in my job, certainly my raises have not kept up with inflation. During the COVID, we took a pay cut of seven and a half percent. After COVID, it was reinstated and we got a 3% raise. So folks may not want to continue listening to me, but I'm going to keep, because I have some good points, some numbers that people need to be aware of. In 1992, our tax rate was .66. In 93, 92 was a revow year, and the council did decrease the tax rate to .60. Over time, with every revow, from 1992 to 2016, past town councils kept revenue neutral. And this is at the same time when our population has been, I don't recall the numbers now, but our population in Morrisville has exploded. And a point that we, so now our current tax rate is, let me make sure, .35. So, no, it's .35 plus the bond that residents voted in favor of. Put it at .39. What we're proposing tonight is .35. And I will say, Councilmember Johnson made a very, very valid point that the inflation that all of us have, are experiencing on a day-to-day basis, the town experiences also, and that we cannot stay at revenue neutral. And with the population increasing, we need to keep our services for police and firefighters to match the additional residents and property that we have now in the town. Plus, you take the, the inflation of salaries, cost of just maintaining the lights being on in our town. Everything is, has increased for the town. And as Councilmember Robati mentioned, you know, we hear from residents that want more parks and more green space. Well, as you all know, the, the cost of property in this town has risen exponentially. And the town has made an effort to try to buy land as it becomes available before it increases to, you know, bajillion dollars to, so that we can have more parks for residents in our town. I guess I just want to say that there, I mean, we're not the, what? We are lowering the tax rate. It is our property that has increased. But we don't do it just for the heck of it because we want to, you know, put a lot of fluff in the budget. As the past others have said, we've reviewed it and, and trying to do the best we can with the funds that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Skrogan Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
This is not easy. It's not easy as your neighbor. It's not easy as a peer on the council. The budget this year has been extremely difficult to look at the reevaluation and the impact it has, not only on Morrisville, but on Wake County as a whole. We all know that there has been an IT company that is outside the town borders, Apple, that has affected everybody's house value with, and we are not receiving any benefit as a town from that new entity. But we are receiving the other effects of higher valuations and so forth like that. So when the reevaluation happened, I think it's important that everybody understands that there are a faster increase in the houses than there was in the commercial properties. So even if we set this to revenue neutral today, you would all have a tax increase. Every single house would have a higher tax increase. There might be a few exceptions. Maybe not all is a bad word. But I know I would receive a tax increase at revenue neutral because the balance is more for residential and lower for commercial. We looked at that as a challenge as a council, and we saw that we need to invest and have someone who's on Morrisville's side in economic development so we can bring the commercial strength up so the residents don't have to carry the burden of those taxes as much. So as we start strengthening the commercial base, we will be able to rebalance. But this one was really hard because the inequity of that increase of value across our town. I have always been a proponent of revenue neutral because we don't want to overburden individuals. We want them to age in place. I want my daughter to be able to live in Morrisville. She cannot live in Morrisville. I want my son to look at Morrisville. He can't even find a place to rent. So it is very difficult. And I know, I've been here 20 years, exactly how this has gone. So we challenged the administration to invest with the rate of growth in current operations, but anything that was above revenue neutral had to be returning value to the residents. We had to make sure we're investing in the parks, in the public safety, and so forth. But when we looked at everything with inflation and the committed costs, revenue neutral was actually three cents above revenue neutral in order to keep services and the committed projects that we had. We couldn't even go down to where we wanted to be. There's two cents. That's about the three cents that we're proposing. And that really is investing in public safety, in future parks, looking at our programming, looking towards the future. And it's not as much as we wanted it to be. We wanted it to invest even more, but we came down because I've been challenging everyone, including the staff and the council, to really try to get as most, as we can out of every penny. And this is a very good balance of need and want, but most importantly, need. And I really can't find another penny that would not hurt us as we build towards the future. So my husband's a teacher, so I do understand challenges. And this is going to hurt me quite a bit, actually. But I really think that it's important as a town that we invest. But I really think that it's important as a town that we invest and we continue to grow. Thank you.
Mayor Protam-Garamello, followed by Councilmember Rau, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I know everyone who has spoken has spoken with their heart. And there is a reason why they are here. And all across, every day I walk, I think about it. The one question I'm not able to answer myself is, how will the seniors afford it? And I got calls from several seniors who said, what is this 20% raise? And I sat down and I explained to them. I said, look, it's 39 cents, which you are currently paying. Revenue neutral is 30 cents. And then we have added 5 cents, which is much needed. So it is at 35 cents. And they said, what does that mean to me? I said, it's 5 cents per every 100. And two of the ladies said, okay, I can take that. And, and I'm telling, as an example, I'm not telling, you know, everyone to do it. So it is important, as everyone has said here today. I was, I don't look at my mortgage payment because it's auto pay. And I took advantage of the low interest. So starting of the year, or sometime, I would not even use, say, March-April timeframe, I continuously was getting calls from my insurance company, like mortgage company. I said, why the heck are they calling me? You know, I have everything in auto pay. Then I looked at some mail, my insurance was gone up by 40%. And so it is part of that, and I was not making the payments because I didn't care to see. You know, because it is set. So everything is increasing here. And the thing we struggle every day here, our dollars are not having that wavelength to get more out of it. Example I have given last time, the dog park, as much as he wanted, and I'll like, it is a, we invested, we planned for a million, and we ended up 1.5. Just giving a small example. And some people talked about transportation. Yes, around $200 million was allocated from DOT and other agencies. But guess what? They will just do the road, and small betterment charges that we do, like sidewalks and other things, go along with it. Those charges, the magnitude, we had to pay our fair share of it, is several million dollars. It is not cheap. And we are investing, especially in this budget, on economic development. It used to be a wing of the chambers. They have done a great job in the past, but we need to do much better job because there's a very high vacancy rate in all the commercial in Morrisville. People are coming to us and asking, what can you do because we are running vacant? We don't have businesses after COVID. Many of their things are empty and offices have gone, like either remote or other agencies. So it is hard. And, and I got a call just before coming in from a person who lives on Crabtree Crossing, lives in three to four million dollar house, and said, what is this 20%? And I was explaining to him, we are the only town in entire Wake County where we have 55 and 45, 55 commercial and 45 residential. If you look at 55, commercial, what does that involve? All the office complexes, all the apartment complexes, all the businesses, everything come into that. They pay the same amount of taxes. And we don't give them nothing, literally. They don't need fire, like they need, obviously, they need fire, but not police, no schools needed for them, and no trash pickups. All are their own investment. And we are basically 45 person that we are catering to. That is helping us tremendously to keep the taxes to where it is. We are locked with nine square miles. That is our biggest problem. If we had more land, I bet you would have used every bit of it. And why are we competing to buy land? Councils in the past have done some good job. Take example of the downtown. In the past, they have bought 10 acres and they kept it. So now we are expanding and building on top of it. Guess what? An acre now is close to a million dollars in this area. And where do we get the money? Even though we allocated one cent, which is equivalent to a million, from last two, three years, we have been spending close to three to four cents of taxpayers' money on land acquisition from the fund balance because it is a need of the hour that we need that land. We are competing with the developers. We are competing with other big agencies who don't want to budge down on any of the prices. So, and are we able to do collaborations? Heck, yeah. Because if you look at the Wake Tech, the collaboration at Wake Tech, we got 20 acres, 10 to 20 acres, I think, 17 acres of land. That is, if we buy it in real market, it's 17 million dollars. And we got it at $1 per year as a lease. The Wake County too, we, at Merkham's property, we are buying it with a future state that we are getting close to 20, 30 acres along the lake. So we have plans. Can we develop it? We all enjoy Bon Park. It was someone's foresight who did that, that we are able to walk. We cannot create everything, but we can create a few things and kind of reserve those parkland. And it is super important for our kids to have a green space and not a concrete jungle, which has pretty much became the de facto. Talking about, going back to economic development, I wanted to say, we need it because we want more investments to come into Morrisville so that that will help elevate the taxes to a lower level. Example, you know, we are getting close to 2 million square feet of space and life signs. That is great, you know? We, we see all the new development on Macramin Parkway. But someone has to come in there, and someone has to make that a home or a headquarters. We are losing out a lot of businesses to Holly Springs and other agencies in other towns around. Why? We are not prepared for it. So we want to ensure we are having a future foresight. We are ensuring that we get all these investments into our town and make it more robust. Parks are nice, they're not cheap to maintain. There's a lot of maintenance cost that goes into it. Like, I've heard comments about lawn mowers and other things. Efficiency is also important. We are commercial properties. You know, we are commercial, like, basically, we don't, it's not out of my house, lawnmower. You know, you need to do it in a commercial manner. And we have an excellent public works, staff. But do you guys know where they're, they are currently stationed? That whole place looks like a shack. And I'm very sorry that our staff has been in there for almost two decades or even more than that. And not a single time you see, like, complaining about it. We need to have that up. We need money. We need public safety. You know, yeah, you know, we are building fire stations because we have to keep our ISO standard at ISO 1. What does that mean? I was at the fire station today, which means if a call comes in, within eight minutes, the people, the, our fire truck has to be in that spot to keep that rating. Which means, I was talking to the chief today, which, which means within 30, 60 seconds of the call, these guys have to have the truck running out. So it's not easy. And guess what? All these people who are working for us are human and facing the same kinds of issue of inflation. Staff is our biggest asset. And without them, we can't, we can't function. And we can take all the credit that we want on the council, but it is the staff who basically works. It makes us look good, that we all know. And Bob has always alluded to that. It is, we look good because of them. And if we don't take care of them, I think we will start losing. And we had a lot of turnover in police, in fire, in planning. And that is not just Morrisville, that is all across. And we spend a lot of money on training these people because we want them to be the best. But at the same time, there's a cost associated with it. All the IT that we talked about doesn't come free. The Juneteenth that we are doing doesn't come free. You know, the Diwali we are doing, nothing, doesn't come free. So there's a cost. And we enjoy having those benefits in our town because we live here and for sure will die here too. And that is who I am, like, because I'm so much invested into Morrisville. So for, for me, you know, this budget, I see as we are, if we don't forge forward to get things done, it's only going to take us backwards. And, and that is my biggest fear, is I'm, I might be the one of the most frugal person, especially, why you need it. But this time, I feel the expenses are so high, and the cost of real estate and everything that we do is just blowing off. We have contracted a third party to do an analysis even before we bid what it would cost. Even they are not able to tell us exactly how much it is. The costs are going up. So, and Nightdale, I was talking to Jessica Day, she's the mayor of Nightdale, they're going 14 cents. And I asked, how are you doing it? And their one tax is, one cent is $450,000. So if you look at the big picture, the cost that they are using is pretty much the same cost that we are using in terms of how much money is needed to make things happen. The costs are the same. There, we were at $400,000 six years ago, and now we are at $1 million a cent. It is helping us, it is helping you, but the cost is just not going down. So I still don't know the answer, how the seniors will manage it. But I did ask our town manager, and he said there were resources in Wake County which helped with these. And I think I would ask him to publish that out to our websites because we do not have, we, taxing authority, and it is hard for us that to give only for seniors and not to give seniors. So with that, I, I totally hear. And, but I just wanted you all guys to know, it is hard on us for what we are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rau, please.
Excuse me. A few months ago, I heard a quote from a Swami at one of the temples here in Morrisville, Bap Swamini Ryan, who just had a walkathon last week. And the quote was, "Coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success." And those words really had a profound impact for me because the first thing I actually thought about was Morrisville. I think about each and every one of you that have come forward today to be concerned about your community. But we should all be very proud because we have come together, stayed together, and worked together to build one of the best places to live, work, and play in in the country. You have one of the smartest city councils, I think, in the state or country, with more experience here, and probably one of the best staffs in, in the state. That's why we're doing such a great job. So we should, we should share, we should celebrate that success. Now, I gotta be honest with you. I totally appreciated the passion and dedication of everyone who's expressed their concerns on the budget. About 30 minutes before the meeting, I spoke to Mayor Holcomb, who was my first mayor. And we had a really good conversation, and I expressed to her how appreciative I was of some of the great points that she's made and all of you have made. And you guys did such a good job that up until a few days ago, I was prepared to vote no. Or look and see, can we lower the rate in some ways? Whether it's, you know, putting land acquisition off. But some of my colleagues convinced me that it may not be the best thing to do that because we're taking the money anyway to buy the land. So having it dedicated is probably better. But I just want to, there's basically two things that really stood out to me. The first is that all the municipalities have increased the tax rate above revenue neutral. But with the 35 cent rate today, we're still gonna be the fourth lowest rate in Wake County, which I think is, puts us in a good position. And I do believe that whenever I make a decision, I've been here 13 years, and I've had a lot of decisions I've had to make when people come out and they want, you know, I know you want us to vote no or do something different. But I look at the benefits within the budget at a high level, and what are some of the good things in there that, that we can, we can be proud of? That you all, the residents of Morrisville, whether you're here today or watching this on the stream. So some of them, I'm not gonna get into every single one, but do we want more police to keep us safe? We've had a lot of burglaries recently in Morrisville. We want it to be safe. We've got, you know, gun violence occurring everywhere. So this budget invests in police, it invests in fire, it invests in economic development, like Mayor Protam said, to make sure that we have a pipeline of projects so that when we do approach redevelopment, and the only way that we can build is through the taxes, that we can actually prevent us from doing that. And also affordable housing, rental assistance, which we, we need to have in Morrisville. And I want to commend this council and staff for saying, if we're gonna have affordable housing in Morrisville, we're gonna have to invest to have that affordable housing. I mean, that's the only way it's gonna happen. And so we're doing that. And the most important thing, the staff. Turnover is high in Wake County, and we cannot run the town of Morrisville and ensure high service levels if we don't have the staff to do it. And we've got a great, great staff, and they're doing a great job. So by investing in all these areas, I really believe that we are laying a foundation for a much stronger and prosperous future. This budget invests in things that we need today, but also in things that we need in the future. And if we don't invest now, the cost is gonna go up. But it's also a result of extensive collaboration and compromise. We began this in January in retreat. We had a number of options presented to us, 7 cents, 5 and 1/2 cents, 5 cents. Many of us on the council wanted to stay in revenue neutral or go maybe only a few cents above that. But after extensive dialogue with our manager, Brandon Zudema, with our staff, the budget that was put forth to us was that 5 cents is what gets us to doing all these things that we need to do, investing in our town center, doing all these things, and meets as many people, the needs of many people as possible for the future. As one of the senior members of the council, I'm absolutely convinced that we can continue to work together to address all of the different issues that we've raised today. And I tell you this, this, and I told Mayor Holcomb this, the feedback you've given me has given me some ideas. Keep this in mind, this is this year's budget. We've got another budget we're gonna vote on a year from now, less than that. And we're gonna take this feedback to look at different fees, different programs. I'm not gonna get into it because we'll be here for another hour. But we can take this feedback and, and, and take a look and see what we can do moving forward. So you've been incrementally important in that. I can't thank you enough. I can't thank you enough for coming here today and emailing. And I know that you're not gonna be happy, but I can assure you this. Every single one of my teammates up here is listening. We are listening, we are getting this feedback, and we're not, it's not, and we're in this together. Because even if you don't agree with us, or even if you didn't vote for us, I've Because even if you don't agree with us, or even if you didn't vote for us, I've always said, even the people who didn't vote for me, I represent them every day, seven days a week. So we get it, we listen to you. Now, the one thing I'll say, I just wanna end with a couple of things. There are some programs for seniors that we wanted to just, maybe the town staff can help us roll this out, but, you know, we've got, if you're, I'm not gonna get into the details of every one, but there's programs for, it's called the Elderly or Disabled Homestead Resemption. If you're 65 and older or 100% disabled, you can get up to $25,000 or 50% of your home value. There's the Disabled Veterans Program. There's also a program that allows you to, if you own and occupy your home for more than five years, you can choose a program that ensures that your property tax bill will not be more than 45% of your income. So I think as we continue to work together collectively, we can look at, at options of, of addressing our senior community. And so that's really all I have to say today. I, I, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out, but this is not the end, it's just the beginning. It's the beginning, no, it's a continuation, it's a continuation of the remarkable journey we're on, to be the best place to live, work, and play in, in the, in the nation. And we're gonna not, we're not gonna be able to do it without each and every one of you supporting us. So we hear you, we're gonna do what we can. I've never voted no on a budget. And the reason is, if someone asks me, why couldn't you just vote no? I could, but I think a vote no is a vote against the belief I have in the staff. But a vote yes is yes. This is the budget, I've gotta give Brandon Zudema and the team all the confidence that they have, that we support this budget, so they can continue to excel in what they do and do what, what we can. So keep the dialogue open, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this tonight. I wanna thank, I wanna thank, the final thing I'll say is, I wanna thank the staff for Jeannie Hooks and all of the senior directors, Giselle Rodriguez, Brandon, every single one of you here for working on our budget. It took a lot of work. I wanna thank the council, the mayor, and my colleagues in the council, because we spend more time with each other than we do with our own families often, and it took a lot of work to get here. So I've gone over my time, that's all I have to say tonight. Coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success, and let's continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all those thoughts. I especially appreciate how you highlighted how Wake County is in a position and can, has the authority to actually help those who might be on the margins, who might have difficulty remaining, because we all wanna remain in the town. I know I do. As was said, this started in January, and I really feel strongly that this is an efficient and effective budget, and it does put our residents first. We have been listening, we've been encouraging participation and engagement for months, and we haven't just been doing it during budget session. We listen all year long, and we make adjustments, and we add programs, we add amenities throughout the year. And, but we only get one chance to have the resources to do that and to make those things happy. This budget as presented by the town manager, I'm very proud of the team that has put this together. They listen to us during retreat, because we've been listening to the residents all year long, and they have lots of people listening to the residents as well, they are the boots on the ground, hearing people and their suggestions and what people are looking for. That comes filtered through us, and they've brought back a budget which does a lot. It's really an important first step to maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy from all the past councils who have made the investments that are so important. This makes the investments that are gonna keep making Morrisville one of the best places to live. Unfortunately, the tax, that tax bill is gonna go up for most people in order to maintain what we're doing and to have a new public works facility and to have the parks and to actually use the parkland that we already have to provide the amenities to make it an even better place to live. If you want to ever have a standalone senior center, this is a step in that direction. If you want a community center in town, center, this is an important step in that direction. We are looking into the future with your help. So keep on telling us what you're looking for, and we will do everything we can to provide it in the most efficient and effective manner. Because as was noted, the prices are only going up, and if you want things now, the best time to buy land was 10 years ago. The second best time is today. So we're doing what we can to make sure that you wanna keep on living here and that you can keep living here. So that's all that I wanted to share with you tonight. But as was noted, we are listening. We couldn't, as a group, find another place to shave a penny without affecting the quality of life that you have now and for future residents. So we really appreciate you coming out. And at this time, if there's no more discussion, I'd entertain one of three motions. We're gonna have three motions on this budget. Could we have them up on the screen? Would that make it easier for everybody, please? The first is the ordinance 2024-174-A.
Mayor, there's a copy of the red line at everybody's position. They're in the red line. That might be easiest for whoever might like to make a motion. Thank you.
So can I make a suggestion? I'm, I'm happy to start, but there are three motions to approve the budget, and I, I would like to share that. But I'm happy to make the first one, if, if nobody else wants to.
Yeah, if you can make the first one and someone else second, if everyone wants to have a chance to do that. So Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-174-A of the Morrisville Town Council to approve the fiscal year 2025 annual operating budget and capital investment program.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Fender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. Would someone else like to make the second motion?
I'll do that. I make a motion that we approve RES 2024-174-B of the Morrisville Town Council, authorizing both, both Wake and Durham County Revenue Administrators to levy and collect specified taxes and fees on behalf of the town of Morrisville.
Second.
And a second by, a motion from Councilmember Body, a second by Councilmember Fender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Would you like it? Mayor Protem, or? Councilmember Ral, please.
Can you hear me? I lost my... Sorry. Give me one second.
Do you want me to do it?
Can you hear me? I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-174-C of the Morrisville Town Council adopting the capital budget as outlined in the capital investment program.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion was made by Councilmember Ral and seconded by Councilmember Body to adopt RES 2024-174-C, adopting the capital budget as outlined in the capital investment program. All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0 as well. We have a budget. Congratulations to the town and to the town manager with our thanks for all the hard work by, done by you and your team. Very proud of how this group has come together to address the town's needs. At this time, I'd like to take a break for 10 minutes. Please reconvene at 8:49.
Okay, we are now at item 11B. I'm going to recognize planning director Michelle Stiegel to come forward to facilitate the next item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The TOD development and zoning plan was initially presented to town council back on September 12th. A review of the plan was put on hold back in November pending the results of a church street traffic analysis. The results of that analysis were presented to you in the spring. And this item was briefed to you again at your last meeting on May 28th. At the May 28th meeting, town council did request one change to the TOD, the TOD development and zoning plan. And that was a reference to indigenous species in the streetscape feature section. That change has been made. No other changes have been made to the proposed plan. The public hearing on this item does remain open and action on this item is tentatively scheduled for this evening. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? As was noted, this public hearing has been continued from May 28th. Is there anyone who is signed up to speak this evening?
We have no one signed up to speak this evening.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak on this public hearing item for up to three minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing. I have a motion from councilmember Johnson, a second from councilmember Robati. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously seven zero. And now, is there any discussion on this before we take a motion? Seeing none, would anyone like to make the motion? To approve the transit oriented development and zoning plan? I'd like to recognize councilmember Johnson.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-2966, Bureau of the Mooresville Town Council approving the transit oriented development and zoning plan.
Okay, a motion was made by councilmember Johnson and seconded by councilmember Robati to approve the transit oriented development and zoning plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
This time we're at item 11C. The next hearing will be a quasi judicial hearing. At this time, I'd like to recognize our town attorney Frank Gray. To give us some information.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the quasi judicial hearing starts, I thought I would just stop and note a few things about the quasi judicial hearing. I know some of you have done these before, but as a reminder, quasi judicial means it's sort of like court. It's not court, but it's sort of like court in that the witnesses will be sworn before they testify. And in essence, you are the jury. You listen to the evidence that's presented. And at the end of all the evidence being presented, you make findings of fact and conclusions of law. You'll hear that the standard for the special use permit is actually seven components to it. And the applicant has the burden of proving to you that each of the seven elements have been met in order to issue the special use permit. And our state law requires that the applicant be given an impartial hearing. And that's defined to mean that no member should have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing. It's not susceptible to change. That you've not had any undisclosed ex parte communications with others about the matter before you start the hearing. That you do not have any close familial business or other associational relationship with the party, with the applicant. Or do you have any, nor do you have any financial interest in the outcome? So I would say if you can, if you have any concerns about those elements, you should state your conflict or potential conflict. Or if you feel like you cannot be impartial in any way, you should, you should state that now and be disqualified. Otherwise, that is the elements of being impartial. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but if not, in the process, we'll begin by having the witnesses sworn who plan to testify. And of course, the staff, as usual, will be the first presenter. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the town attorney or anything they wish to share about the impartiality? Okay, thank you very much for all that information, we appreciate it. At this time, the deputy town clerk will come forward to administer oaths to all the speakers. Afterwards, acting planning manager Brittany Johnson will facilitate this item.
Bianca, if I could, Mayor, suggest that, given the number of witnesses, that we let them raise their hand and acknowledge the oath that way. Thank you.
Alright, so you'll repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Do solemnly swear.
Sowland Swear.
To tell the truth. The whole truth. And nothing but the truth. So help me God. Thank you. If, I'm sorry, if you missed the sign up sheet, please come and sign it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an application for the quasi dash twenty-four dash zero zero eight, a special use permit application submitted by Brew Duke Energy Progress LLC. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a major utility facility use to accommodate the future development and operation of an electrical substation at Zero Airport Boulevard and a portion of four twenty-nine Airport Boulevard located south of the intersection of Airport Boulevard and the Kriemman Parkway. You'll see here, the subject property is outlined in yellow. The property is approximately fifteen point forty-six acres. Post recombination, the property is zoned corridor commercial and is currently vacant. Adjacent properties, the proposed site is outlined in yellow. Two existing single family residential properties outlined in red. And a proposed or a prior approved mixed use development consisting of a small hotel and multifamily units is outlined in blue. All other properties are vacant or zoned commercially. The proposed development, as you review the proposed development, it's important to note that the location of the transmission corridor that will service the proposed substation has not been finalized. Therefore, the applicant has provided four unique site plan options, A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D. Each option anticipates a different point of entry of the transmission lines to the property and has different tree impacts and areas of clearing. The transmission corridor routing is not within the purview of the town to decide. Additionally, any one of the four proposed options could be the final site design. Each option has a corresponding demolition plan depicting the areas of impact and a site plan. The project will require staff level site plan review. I will provide a brief overview of each option. The applicant will also review that in their presentation. Option A is our first option, and this is demolition plan. You'll see that the transmission corridor enters from the east, right here along Airport Boulevard. The light blue area, which are on the edges here, shows the total area of removal and grubbing for areas of danger tree clearing. The darker blue area located in the center would be total clearing. And this area hatched here in gray would be areas of total clearing and grading within the limits of disturbance. Option A, the site plan, you'll see here that there are different areas of tree save and preservation. Per the UDO, fifteen percent tree save is required. Option A proposes thirty-eight point seventy-eight percent tree save. Additionally, the areas in purple here on either side of the transmission corridor entrance area, they are proposing, the applicant is proposing replanting in these areas. And there will be continuous shrubs and undersorted trees that do not exceed fifteen feet at the height of maturity. Moving on to option B. The demolition plan, you'll see that the transmission corridor enters the property from the north. Here, the different colors here, you'll see that the hatched area completely is the limits of disturbance once again. The light blue area would be total danger tree clearing, no grubbing. The green area within the riparian buffer would be danger tree zone sensitive clearing. The dark blue would be total machine clearing. And the yellow would be sensitive clearing, no grubbing. And that's also again within the riparian buffer. Option B, site plan, fifteen percent tree save again is required. This site plan proposes thirty point two eight percent tree save proposed. And again, the areas in purple would be those areas of replanting, which would have continuous shrubs and undersorted trees not to exceed fifteen feet. Moving on to option C. You'll see that the transmission corridor would be entering the property from the west. Again, the hatched area are our limits of disturbance. The light blue area denotes total danger tree clearing, no grubbing. The dark blue area shows machine clearing. Green within the riparian buffer would be sensitive clearing. And the yellow, the small portion here, would be total clearing, no grubbing within the riparian buffer. The site plan for option C proposes thirty-one point nine zero percent tree save, again fifteen percent is required. And the areas in purple would show the areas of replanting with those shrubs, continuous shrubs and undersorted trees not to exceed fifteen feet in height. Lastly, we have option D. Option D shows the transmission corridor entering the property from the south. Again, this is your hatched area of limits of disturbance, within that area would be completely graded, cleared and graded. The light blue section would show total machine clearing and danger tree zones. So a little portion here and along this buffer as well. And then the darker blue area would be total machine clearing. For option D site plan, it's shown that the, again, the tree save that would be required would be fifteen percent. This plan proposes thirty-five point zero two percent tree save. And the areas located in purple, this larger area here along the western buffer, and a small, small portion here would propose that replanting of those continuous shrubs and undersorted trees not to exceed fifteen feet at maturity. Special use permit standards. As the town attorney reviewed, there are seven standards. The applicant must demonstrate through competent materials and substantial evidence and testimony how the findings meet the seven special use standards outlined below per section two point five point six D of the UDO. The first standard, the proposed development will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Two, the proposed development will comply with all regulations and standards generally applicable within the zoning district and specifically applicable to the particular type of special use. Three, the proposed development will not substantially injure the value of a zoning property or the public necessity, or, or is a public necessity. Four, the proposed development will be in harmony with intensity, scale, character of the development existing or planned in the surrounding areas. Five, the proposed development will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. Six, the proposed development will not generate need for transportation, water supply, sewer, fire, and police protection and similar public services that cannot be adequately handled by available infrastructure and facilities. And seven, the proposed development will, will be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation, upon reviewing the evidence and testimony demonstrating the finding the facts are met, staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. One, perimeter buffers that exceeds the minimum width required by the UDO will be provided generally in the areas of the site plan as shown in the plan indicated with the, included with the special use permit application. Two, the amount of tree canopy retention and preservation area will be provided on the site will exceed the minimum required by the UDO as shown in the described plan included with the special use permit application. Three, the application submitted, the applicant shall submit an annexation petition with the site plan approval application for the property that will be subject to special use permit approval. Four, the proposed development shall be developed consistent with the approved site plan, notwithstanding minor modifications to the approved site plan that may be approved administratively consistent with provisions of section two point five point six D, CD of the UDO. For tonight's action, again, this is your public hearing, that's what will be taking place tonight until the public hearing is closed. Until the public hearing is closed, closed on June twenty-fifth, you will take action on this item, at which time you may approve as submitted, approve with conditions, or deny. This is a quasi judicial process, therefore you will be reviewing the findings of fact. That concludes my presentation. This is your resolution before you. Before I turn it over to the applicant, do you all have any questions for staff or the town attorney?
It does, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi, please.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand that the applicant has presented four different options. So what we would be voting on or adjudicating is whether any of those options, like, we're saying that the special, we're okaying the special use, but then any of those options could end up being the final option, is that the situation?
Yes, any one of the four options would be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I need to follow up on that. So we have no say in the options then? I want to understand, this is a little unique. I think any special use permit we've done before, there weren't options that we approved, it was a plan. So, do we have say then?
Unfortunately, you don't have a say on the entrance of the, or the location of the transmission corridor. Therefore, Duke is anticipating entrance to the property from all directions. That's why you are presented with four separate options. So your approval would approve all four options, any one of which could be the final design.
Okay, so I'll tell you all straight up, I don't like that idea. But anyhow, we can hopefully hear some more as we go through. All right, thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Actually, Councilmember Fender, please.
So I had a question about slide three. Well, those two residents, one of them is outlined in red, the other one's not. Well, they, I'm assuming that that is not part of the property that Duke Energy has purchased?
The, the property's outlined in red?
Uh, yeah, let's cope with that.
Yeah, so those are existing single-family residential properties. They are called, they are outlined to show their adjacency to the plan site.
But they, those residents, they will essentially stay unless they decide themselves to move?
Yes.
And I'm guessing that's the same with the lower right? You don't have it outlined, but it's adjacent, that's another residence down there.
Yeah, I visited the site, I don't believe that property is inhabited at this time.
Okay. Oh, and then I had another question. Oh, why, I, I, kind of building off of Councilmember Johnson's comments, questioning the sequence of events. Why are we having to approve a special use permit now as opposed to Duke Energy deciding on the routing of the transmission lines first? And then approve the special use permit?
I won't let the applicant follow up on that, but to my knowledge, it's based on timing.
Okay, what's the timing of the routing of the transmission line decision?
I think that that would be better answered by the applicant, they can give a little more information than I can.
Okay, yep, I'll wait.
Mayor, if I could chime in just a little bit further on that four options. The major utility facility is a permitted use in this zoning district, subject to a special use permit. So the, the substation is sort of its own thing, and that's what you have jurisdiction over. The Utilities Commission would have jurisdiction over the routing of the transmission line. And I think the staff has asked Duke to give you the four options they're looking at for routing the transmission line. But that has not occurred yet, and I'm sure you'll hear from them the sequence of events and why. And of course, this council has weighed in on which route you prefer. And so I'm sure they're cognizant of that. But I think that's why they're four, is because the staff asked them to put four on there to reflect which way the lines might go.
Councilmember Abadi, please.
Do you anticipate that the applicant will testify that they have no idea which plan is most likely to be selected?
Unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to speak to the likelihood. They may be able to give you some insight as to which, which plan would be more probable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this time, I believe it'd be appropriate to say, declare this public hearing now open. And recognize, Madam Clerk, do you have anyone who signed up to speak on this item? Because that's how they're going to present, or is it a presentation first?
We do not have.
I think they're represented by council, and the council would probably start.
Start the process rolling? Okay, I'd like to recognize you, if you, your name and your role for the record, please. Everyone we'll hear, we're going to hear from was sworn in.
All right, good evening, to start us off, my name is Amy Kraut, I'm an attorney at Smith Anderson. I'm Duke Energy's outside counsel on this case. I'm here today along with other members of Duke's team, which you saw get sworn in earlier. I will highlight for you that not all of them are planning to be called as witnesses to testify, but they are here to answer any questions that you might have. We're here in support of this special use permit application that will allow Duke to construct and operate a substation on the property. This substation is an important part of Duke's plan to improve service and increase its electric grid's capacity. And it's critical to continue providing reliable electricity to support the unprecedented growth in Morrisville. First and foremost, we always like to say thank you to town staff. Duke has worked very closely with them over the past several months to put this application together. And we appreciate their work to get us to this point. Brittany's presentation was very thorough, so I'm going to try not to be duplicative of it. As noted earlier, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Duke will be walking through the application materials and presenting additional evidence and testimony to demonstrate that it meets the seven following standards required to issue this special use permit. And we do ask that the application's TAF report agenda packet this presentation and all testimony and evidence presented be entered into the record. So this project generally, we're proposing to build a substation on an approximately fifteen point four six acre portion of a twenty-four acreage assembly on Airport Boulevard, just north of NC fifty-four. The zoning for this property is corridor commercial and substations are allowed with a special use permit. The property is primarily surrounded by office and warehouse uses. Adjacent to the north is office and lab space. To the west and south and east are warehouses. There are those two single-family homes. But as TAF noted, the one to the southeast does not appear to be occupied. Maps show that the substation is close to major life science projects on the McCrimmon Extension, both this park and Pathway Triangle. And we actually have a representative from Pathway Triangle here this evening, who will speak a little bit later. I will note that the homes, the residential homes are also zoned corridor commercial, just as kind of a general future use. I'm now going to pass the mic over to Cliff Kate. He's the assistant, he's the capacity planning manager for Duke. He's going to talk a little bit about how this project will not materially endanger the public health and safety, is a public necessity, and is in harmony with the area.
All right, good evening. So I'd like to start just to review the existing substations in Morrisville, as well as their proximity to the proposed new substation. So you can see there in the bottom of the screen, we've got the Morrisville Substation. That is the one on Morrisville Carpenter Road. We just completed an expansion there to double the capacity of that substation. The second existing substation is what we call the RTP Substation. And that is the one on Church Street near the cricket field. And that is the one that we are constructing a temporary substation that will be in place to allow us to construct the proposed Morrisville Industrial Substation. So now I would like to review the load growth as well as our existing capacity. So you can see on this bar chart, it's laid out by year showing our known and projected load growth as well as our capacity. So the, the vertical bars are our capacity. And the blue line that you see increasing from twenty-five through twenty-seven is actually our load growth. So the bottom, the darker blue capacity bar here on this chart is the, the Morrisville Industrial Capacity. And that is fixed capacity, is permanent, it's going to be there, you know, ideally for the next thirty to forty years. So you can see there, that does not change over the next three years. The blue, lighter blue line is the RTP, the permanent RTP Substation that, that is already in place and will remain in place. Similar to Morrisville, you know, ideally for the next thirty to forty years. And then we move into the, the green area in years twenty-five and twenty-six. That is the temporary substation that we're constructing at RTP. And you can see, without that temporary construction, we would not be able to serve the load even as it is today, much less for future growth. So that is the reason that we constructed that temporary substation at the RTP Substation. So there's two factors that are allowing us to continue to serve the increased load growth in Morrisville. One is the temporary substation at RTP. Another factor is, is that we have worked with the large life science campuses, and we've actually restricted their growth. They're multi-phase developments, and currently we are only permitting them to, to build out their phase one. They cannot build out the subsequent phases until we get the permanent solution, which is the proposed Morrisville Industrial Substation. And you can see in year twenty-seven, it could be late twenty-seven, could possibly be early twenty-eight. But you can see that gray block there, that is the capacity that we will see when the new Morrisville Industrial Substation comes online. And we will remove the green, which is the temporary RTP Substation. But you can see in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, when that Morrisville Industrial Substation comes online, it does give us sufficient capacity to continue to, to allow Morrisville to grow at its current pace. And we will remove the restrictions for the, the large life science developments when the Morrisville Industrial Substation comes online. And that, the removal of that restriction is reflected here as well. That's why you can see the, the increase, severe increase of load growth between twenty-six and twenty-seven. That shows the subsequent phases coming online. And we, we've looked at this map previously, but I, but I did want to, to revisit it. This just continues to show the unprecedented load growth that we're seeing in the Morrisville area. We continue to see load growth requests on a, you know, weekly, bi-weekly basis. Large life science campuses, data centers, industrial manufacturing, as well as, you know, commercial, industrial, and residential growth. So the, the load growth is not declining, it is not slowing down. We continue to see the, the load growth requests. And you can see, if you look at, you know, the, the loads that are shown here on this map, this highlights the need for us to target the Morrisville Industrial Substation and the location that it, that is currently being proposed. We always want to build our substations in the load center so that we can most effectively, most efficiently serve all of the growth in that area. Not just the large industrial life science campuses that we're seeing, but this will, this will serve all new load that comes online in the, in the area around the Morrisville Industrial Substation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Amy.
All right, speaking a little bit more to harmony with the surrounding area and conformity with the comprehensive plan. You know, this really is an ideal location for a substation. It's adjacent to office space, warehouses, and really commercial uses. And it's located to support the surrounding major developments, Park, Pathway, Triangle, the TOD that was just approved. And overall, the size of the site and location of the site allows Duke to maximize separation from any adjoining uses while maintaining the applicable requirements of the UDO standards as well as federal, state, and local requirements. In terms of the comprehensive plan, it is designated office in the land use plan. The proposed, the proposed substation is a non-residential in character and is necessary to support all the preferred uses that the plan identifies for the office land classification as well as other classifications. As further outlined in the application, the proposed substation aligns with the plan's policies and vision by ensuring nearby infrastructure can support new higher intensity development before it's approved. And it meets the needs of existing and future residents, attracting businesses, employers, and new development, allowing the community to maintain a high quality of life. I'm going to talk a little bit now and give a high level view of the site plan provided. I know Brittany did a great job of walking through it earlier. As noted, Duke Energy did provide for alternative layouts. These layouts were submitted because the location of the transmission line has not been finalized yet. And we'll have someone from Duke get up and testify a little bit more about that process in a little bit. But just to highlight that for you, the town doesn't have authority to decide the ultimate route chosen. As noted by Mr. Gray, this special use permit is for the substation itself. The transmission line routing process goes through the Utilities Commission. So what Duke did to compromise with TAF was we wanted to provide four alternatives to show regardless of which way that transmission line came into the site, the proposed use will comply with all regulations and standards of the UDO, including buffering and landscaping. So before diving into each layout, I wanted to note that in reality, the majority of each of the layouts and substation features aren't varied. The location of the substation, the access drive and stormwater management area on the property don't change based on layout. The substation will be secured by an eight-foot-tall fence. No water or sewer connections are needed to serve the substation. As will be noted later, this is an unmanned site. So there will be no impact traffic, and it will not generate any additional public service needs. Each layout does provide perimeter buffers consistent with the UDO. The only exception is within the transmission line right-of-way, which must be clear. And traditional buffer requirements don't apply to that transmission line. Each layout does require installation of lower-profile landscaping in the danger tree areas adjacent to the transmission line right-of-way. Continuous shrubs and understory trees that don't exceed fifteen feet in height at maturity will be planted to meet specific buffer requirements. Duke is also willing to provide supplemental planning, but until final site plan review, the location of those plants is, is yet to be determined. Not only is Duke meeting the requirements of the UDO, it is also committed to exceeding it in several instances related to buffers. Related to buffers, Duke agreed in its special use conditions to plant additional evergreens around the substation to provide additional buffering for neighboring properties. They've also committed that each layout will limit the impervious surface to one point zero two acres. That's only ten percent of what the UDO permits. And each layout also preserves more than double of the tree canopy required by the UDO. So as Brittany noted, UDO requirement is fifteen percent. All layouts included double that. This is just to show an existing view of the property. And keeping in mind the similarities to each, I'll go through this first layout. So this first layout is where the transmission line will enter the property on the eastern side from Airport Boulevard. As noted, you can see the location of the substation's stormwater area and access drive will be the same on all four layouts. The substation itself is located several hundred feet off of Airport Boulevard and is surrounded by an eight-foot fence. The asphalt access drive will lead to a vehicle turnaround and access area. And the stormwater management area is right to the north of that asphalt drive when entering the property. It's seen in the green circle. There's also a twenty-foot-wide gravel drivable shoulder surrounding the substation. A minimum of twenty or thirty-foot buffer surrounds the property. But the shaded areas that you'll see represent areas of tree canopy that will be protected by that special use permit condition. In this case, the layout, it preserves thirty-eight point seven nine percent. The purple highlighted area, and again, Brittany went over this, is where Duke has agreed to plant vegetation that won't exceed fifteen feet in height. To give you a little bit more context, this is a general rendering of what this layout could potentially look like. And then if you look on Airport Boulevard, you'll see the zero one white circle. And if we move to the next slide, that is the view from that area that you would see from the road. And the light green is where we've got that fifteen feet of additional screening. That would be to further buffer the substation from view from the road. So the second layout is where the transmission line will enter on the northern side adjacent to the office and lab building, which you can see on the top of the site plan. The differences here is the total proposed percentage of existing tree preservation canopy would be thirty point two eight percent. And then you have that additional purple buffering at the top. Otherwise, again, location of the substation, asphalt drives, stormwater management all remain the same and all the landscape and buffering requirements of the UDR are met and can be seen, as can be seen, exceed in places. So again, here's what that general rendering would look like. If you see the zero two circle at the top of that, this is what it would look like from that area from the parking lot. Moving on to the third layout showing where the transmission line would enter on the western side of the property. This is adjacent to the warehouses on that side. Again, only differences are existing tree preservation canopy at thirty-one point nine percent and the location of that purple buffering area. Again, still meets all requirements of the UDO here. Here's what this would look like. You can see the zero three at the top left of the screen. And that would be the view into the substation from that point. The final layout is where the transmission line would enter on the southern side, again, adjacent to warehouses. Difference is the total percentage of existing tree preservation canopy is thirty-five point zero two percent. And you have the longer purple buffer area of where the plants would only reach fifteen feet high of maturity. In this instance, at the bottom of the screen, you see the zero four. And that's what the substation would look like from that angle. At this point, I'm going to call Micah Resklaff. He's a previous DEP lead sighting manager and he'll provide more insight and testimony into the four alternative layouts and give a little bit more information on the transmission line sighting process.
Thank you. Good evening. As Amy mentioned, I'm Micah Resklaff. I've been a member of the project team with regards to our sighting efforts, both for the substation and the transmission line routing. You know, we've we've seen this slide a couple of times already this evening. And again, I'm just here to to really emphasize and reiterate that you'll notice from each of the the alternative layouts that the substation site is is pretty consistent. Really, the only differences between each of these layouts was an effort on our team's behalf to consider the the multiple sides of the property, the subject property, and determine where, you know, a potential transmission line entrance could occur. Not necessarily, you know, certainly when we were developing these alternative layouts, we were even earlier in our line routing study. And so we, you know, were just simply looking at these from a conceptual standpoint with with at that time, you know, pretty limited data on on which sides would be most viable, which sides are least viable. But but from just a pure perspective of determining where we could enter, these is these are what we've come up with. And then, of course, the other piece that's been emphasized by Ms. Crowd and 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 Ms. Johnson was that each of these layout alternatives does fully comply with all of your requirements and your ordinance. Next slide here is, I think, going to answer a few of the questions that some of the council members brought up. It's really our project timeline from here. We are currently obviously in the in the green section number two for substation zoning. This project is unique. I will admit that the company's typical procedure for, you know, developing a new substation site is to first begin with the substation identification. We would then move to security of our local or state federal entitlements, including local zoning. Do all of our due diligence, close on a piece of property and then move, you know, methodically into the transmission line routing study. And and the reason we do, we follow that pretty standard path is that because for projects just like this one, where we have to seek the Utility Commission's approval of our project, the the transmission line route, we need to have an accurate and and not precise, but certainly a very accurate description of the transmission line route from the beginning point, which is typically at our energizing transmission infrastructure that's in the area, that the transmission lines that you saw in a couple of the earlier slides. That's obviously our beginning point and then describe that transmission line route all the way to the termination point of the substation. Without the certainty of 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 closing on that property, having that property under fee simple ownership, the commission and and its reviewing body, the public staff, would not accept a a complete submittal in that case. Where we go from here, as we move into to number three, which is is the, you know, corridor selection. The route study, some of your staff, I think some of the the members of the town staff and some of your leadership have participated in some of our open houses related to the line routing study. That was started last year, kind of middle to fall of twenty twenty-three. We've been trying to move these things as concurrently as possible just because of the situation that that Mr. Cates described earlier, the the impressive load growth that you've got estimated for the city, for the town. And so up to this point, in fact, just yesterday, it's been all about data collection, soliciting you as stakeholders, your residents, other stakeholders in the area, their opinions, their questions, comments, concerns about the line routing project. And as of yesterday evening, the public comment period for that that open, you know, data collection phase is now complete. So the company, the project team is now moving on into the analysis phase of the line routing study where we will take all of the data collected, the the input from the public, from stakeholders, combine that with the constraint data that we identified. Constraints for transmission line routes, as you can imagine, include land uses, environmental sensitivities in the area, will be cultural resources. And our goal with with all of these projects is to avoid and mitigate as much as possible. So as we move into the analysis phase with the transmission line route, it's really about looking at a at a large volume of of options for the transmission line route and then reducing those down via a comprehensive and objective analysis to come up with what we determine to be the very best route. Once we've got that route identified, again, identifying clearly to the to the Utilities Commission, the the point of beginning, the point of end, we would submit to the Utilities Commission our particular approval or or certificate that we need from from that body is called a Certificate of Environmental Compatibility and Public Convenience and Necessity. That process is, you know, a multi-month process. It also, I think something that's very important for you all to understand is that it it also is another step where our decision-making is is scrutinized by members of the public and stakeholders. There will be a public hearing process related to that CPCN. So if the town, I understand the town has has already submitted a letter to the company kind of outlining your preferences for the transmission line route. Certainly that will be part of our submittal to the commission and expect that you'll want to reiterate your your comments and feedback to the commission in that venue. And then the the rest of the 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 project timeline is is noted here in four, five and six in the bottom, which is where we will have all of our entitlements, including both the substation special use and the CPCN from the Utilities Commission, and then move into our design and build phase. And and as Mr. Cates had in his slide and Amy shared earlier, the the end goal here is to have this substation online by twenty twenty-seven.
All right, moving on, we're going to transition to Pete Sokowski to provide more insight and testimony onto substation operations, particularly how it will not endanger public safety and will be in harmony with the surrounding areas, will impact traffic and will not require additional infrastructure or facilities.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for hearing us today. I'll try to keep this real brief. As far as the the substation, it will be unmanned. It's an unmanned station. We'll have approximately one to two monthly visits. I'm sorry, one to two visits per month on on average to for for rounds of maintenance and things like that within the substation. So our traffic count in increased potentially at the substation is 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 pretty nil and negligible. As far as remote monitoring and access, it 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 is remote monitoring for twenty-four seven. We will, again, as stated, we will not have any manned persons there. As far as the sound generation, I think that was one of the things that was mentioned before, especially of the Morrisville two thirty site, there was some indications of noise questions and things like that. So we wanted to present this slide as well. As you can see from this, that, you know, the transmission, the the biggest noise generation within our substation is going to be the transformers. And that is the biggest equipment that we have. And as you can see from the slide itself of where it sits, it is consistent approximately at forty-five DBA at the property line, which is consistent about the hum of a refrigerator or floor fan. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Amy.
As Mr. Cates testified earlier, this substation meets standard three as it is a public necessity. But it also meets the alternative prong of standard three that it will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. The facility will be developed to minimize the impact on the surrounding properties, most of which are zoned for industrial or commercial use by locating the facility on the site to maximize separation from adjacent land uses and provide perimeter buffers. I'd now like to call up Mr. Nick Kirkland to provide testimony on the value impact study conducted, which I'll be handing up. That study concluded that there would be no substantial injury to the value of adjoining property. And if Mr. Kirkland, you'll please come up, introduce yourself, provide your qualification and verify that this document I'm about to pass out is a true and accurate copy. We'd like this to be introduced into the record.
I'll start with, yes, that is a true and accurate copy. My name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina and three other states. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impacts before town councils, boards of commissioners and the like hundreds of times. And I'm a candidate for designation with the Appraisal Institute. With that, I'd like to briefly just discuss what we've done here. We've prepared an impact study in order to address both of the findings of fact for potential to impact adjoining property values as well as whether or not it would be harmonious where it's proposed. So first off, when talking about the majority of the adjoining properties, which are commercial and industrial in nature, the way that you would value those is by looking at how much you could command in rent. In other words, the value of a shopping center or a warehouse or a commercial or industrial use is largely based on the rent that you could command. The rent that you can command is unimpacted by the adjoining property being developed with a substation. Additionally, there is a study that has been done that we cite on page thirteen of the impact study. And this was a study that shows that the impact of being adjacent to a substation is within typical market friction or typical variation in real estate prices and is strong support for no impact to adjoining property values. And based on this, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not impact adjoining property values. Now, in regards to the question of harmony, the obvious question is, well, are there other examples like this nearby? And there are. There are a number of similar substations located next to a variety of uses, including residential and commercial uses within this impact study. Additionally, both of which have come after the substation in a number of the examples. In other words, new residential developments have come very close within one hundred fifty to two hundred feet of existing substations in the Triangle area. And new commercial developments have occurred in and not in, around substations in the same area. So based on this, it's my professional opinion that it will be in harmony where it is proposed to be located.
Actually, Nick, before you step away, I have a question from Councilmember Fender, please.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. So my my biggest concern here is the residence there. How would the substation being located right behind her not injure the value of her residence?
The value of that property, when valuing real estate, it's valued based on the market value, which is based on the highest and best use of land. And the highest and best use as though vacant is something you do whenever developing the value of a property. And so what that says is, if there was no improvements here, no house, no commercial shopping center, what would you put here? What is the highest and best use of this site? For a site that is commercial corridor zoned and has a future land use slated for a commercial type use, you would utilize commercial comparables and the highest and best use would be removal of the dwelling. But to that end, that's why we actually have in there on page thirteen a study that was done that specifically addresses residential values. And it shows that provided that the substation is not closer than a hundred and sixty-five feet, there's no significant impact on adjoining property values. And even at that hundred and sixty-five-foot mark, it's within typical market variation. In other words, it's within plus or minus five percent as you would expect within any range of comparables for a given property.
Well, has anyone talked to Gloria Moss about this? Well, has anyone talked to Gloria Moss about this? She's the property owner.
I would not be the person to address that, but...
All right, that's all.
Thank you.
A council member in response to that last question, we have not heard anything from Ms. Moss.
I'm assuming she's been notified?
She was notified of this public hearing this evening.
By letter?
By the town. The town has notice requirements that go out for all special use hearings. At this point, I just want to provide a general overview. As outlined previously in the presentation and on this slide, Duke application meets the seven required standards of the UDO. It won't materially endanger public health or safety or create a traffic hazard. The substation is secured by an eight-foot tall fence with large setbacks and buffers, including to that northern residential property. And the landscape buffers in places exceed the UDO requirements. There is minimal noise impacts at property lines, and the substation is unmanned and will not generate traffic. As Mr. Cates testified, it is a public necessity for Mooresville to satisfy the town's rapidly growing demand for power. It will not substantially injure adjoining property values per the valuation impact study provided by Kirkland Appraisals. It complies with all applicable UDO requirements. It can be served by available infrastructure and facilities, so there are no transportation needs, no water or sewer required, and it's in an area with adequate police and fire coverage. And overall, it's in harmony with the surrounding area and is consistent with the land use plan. It's consistent with the surrounding warehouse and office uses. It's permitted as a special use under the current zoning, and it's consistent with the office designation in the land use plan. Overall, the proposed substation is needed to support the growing needs of residential, commercial, public safety, institutional, recreational, and civic uses within the community. The town's power needs are growing faster than almost every community in the state, necessitating the construction of the proposed substation. Adequate availability and reliability of electric service is necessary for supporting economic development and maintaining quality of life for the community. This proposed substation at this location increases reliability and resiliency of the electric grid and of electric service. During times of emergency or disaster, loss of utility service can be restored more quickly as a result of modernizing and enhancing the power grid with facilities such as this one. At this point, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, and otherwise, we would ask that you grant this request.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi, please.
Does each of these proposed site plans, do they correspond roughly to potential trend corridors? So in other words, is the east side the one most likely to be selected if the line goes down Airport Boulevard? The north one, if it goes through whatever's on the north? Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna call up Michael Retzloff to answer that question. And I can also...
I mean, generally, yes. If, you know, in your example, your question about the eastern route, yes. If the transmission line route were to come south on Airport Boulevard and approach the property from the east, and then we make a turn towards the west into the substation site, that would be the site plan that would be most appropriate for that route. Similarly, you know, any of the other routes, alternative layouts, would accommodate a transmission line approaching from those particular directions.
Okay, and the only option, as I understand it tonight, there are two options, to approve or not approve. There's no approval of certain site plans that's not on the table?
I think that's correct. Now, the staff is recommending conditions on the approval. But as far as the four corridor, that is a package deal. That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, what conditions is staff recommending on the approval? I must have missed that part.
I have to scroll down.
That was Brittany's presentation, I believe. Can we bring up Ms. Johnson's presentation?
Brittany could probably tell you off the top of her head.
Just one moment. So there are four conditions. The first would be that the perimeter buffers that exceeds the minimum width required by the UDO will be provided generally in the locations on the site plan as shown with the plan included with the special use permit application. Two, the amount of tree save or tree canopy retention in the preservation area will be provided on the site that will exceed the minimum requirements of the UDO as shown in the plan indicated with the special use permit application. Three, the applicant shall submit an annexation petition with the site plan approval application for the property that is subject to the special use for approval. And four, the proposed development shall be developed consistent with the approved site plan, notwithstanding minor modifications to the approved site plan that may be approved administratively consistent with Section 2.5.6(c) CD of UDO.
Why do they need an annexation petition?
The property must be annexed into the town. It's currently unincorporated.
All right, I'm sorry, I know Mr. Kirkland just sat down, but could we have him back up to explain again to me how the residential sites on the perimeter of this site are not gonna be adversely affected? Because I really, I'm really having a hard time with that.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. The easiest way for me to highlight that would be if you flip to page 13, it's the last page of that impact study. So at the top of that, there's a study that was done that was the property value impacts from transmission lines, subtransmission lines, and substations that was done by a PhD and an MAI. And what that found is that there is within 165 feet of a residential dwelling to the substation, a negative 3% impact to the adjoining property value if the dwelling is within that distance. And if it's beyond the 165 feet, it's a 1% impact. Now, from an appraisal perspective, both of those are strong support for no impact to adjoining property value. The reason for that is if you take a cookie cutter neighborhood, for instance, same house or same, yeah, house, floor plan, similar-sized lots, they're not all gonna sell for the same price. They're gonna be generally about the same, plus or minus 5%. If the price point's $200,000 and one sells for $210,000 and the others for $190,000, we would consider that to be a good example of they're both market value. So it being within negative 3% at the most, but it being further away from that is strong support for no impact to the adjoining property values. And that's further supported, there are a number of examples on pages seven, eight, nine, and 12 of residential developments that are cited in close proximity to the substations in this area.
Right, but they all say that you have not attempted any analysis of the residential areas.
That's correct, we have not. However, based on the development of those residential sites in close proximity, a developer would not develop something if they perceived an impact there, which is strong support for, again, no impact to property values.
Oh, so you're saying that in all of these, all of these examples on pages seven, eight, et cetera, that the substation preceded?
Not in all examples, but in some of the examples, yes. A good example of one where it does proceed is number seven, where you can see there's development on every side of that residential development that is significantly closer than the adjoining properties to this one. And again, this is supported by that study, which shows no impact to adjoining residential properties.
Okay, all right. And could you just repeat what you told Councilmember Fender about the highest and best use?
Sure, so when we value a property, you are first going to be looking at, is it currently improved or developed? So in this case, it has a residence on it. Well, when valuing the underlying land, which is an important part of every appraisal, you have to go, what's the highest and best use? So the highest and best use has four tests. They go in order of what's legally permissible, what's physically possible, what's financially feasible, and what's maximally productive. So for this site, it is legally permissible to utilize it for residential use currently. Commercial use or some sort of alternative use would also be legally permissible, given the existing zoning. So the question then becomes, well, are both types physically possible? Sure, you could develop either one. Could you make money doing either one? Yeah, I'm sure you could make money if you built a house there or a commercial use. The question of highest and best use is then, what's maximally productive? What would produce the most value to the property? That is the highest and best use as though vacant. So without talking about the specific value of any property, typically, an older residential dwelling on high-value commercial land, the highest and best use is to remove the dwelling and utilize it for a commercial purpose. So all of these factors kind of contribute together to support the conclusion of no impact to adjoining property values.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rau, please.
So I had a question regarding the routing for option B. The 3D rendering you guys showed.
Right here.
Yeah, so where it comes out in the back of the, I don't know what those buildings are used for, where is it supposed to go from there?
That is a transmission line routing question. So I'm gonna propose that Micah answer that. But I will note that that is a warehouse right behind it, in a warehouse parking lot.
I mean, you're going into a parking lot there and then office warehouse space.
Yeah, I mean, so the view we've got here is looking to the south towards the proposed substation. Behind us would be that building, that warehouse that Amy's referring to. And then this parking lot is the back parking lot. The majority of the parking related to that facility, as I recall from my last visit out there, was kind of further to the north going towards McCrimmon, whatever McCrimmon turns into. So yes, you know, the conceptual option here, and there are a few, is that, you know, the line could potentially come from the west and then make that turn to the south. The line could come from the east and make that turn to the south. So there's a few options. Obviously, the line's not gonna come from the north because that's where the existing structure is. But that's generally the concept of a route that would utilize this layout.
All right, thanks. And then I did have one more question. I can't think of it now. I'll have to... Come back to me.
Councilmember Rau, please.
Yeah, my question has, I guess it's for our staff and then also Duke Energy. You know, what will be the communication process moving forward with surrounding businesses and residents? Because I know in our last substation, this has been, you know, we approved conditions, even though it wasn't a special use permit. And we're seeing that there wasn't as much of a connection with those owners there of like what the final conditions are. So will there be efforts made to send letters out, communicate that way to people?
Yes, prior to the public hearing, letters were sent out to all properties within 500 feet, as well advertised within newspapers twice. And there were signs placed on both of the subject properties.
I had a quick question, I'm not sure for who. The conditions, as noted, were those ones that were requested by the applicant or requested by us? Because sometimes conditions are put in by the applicant, which actually are not what we would want. You know what I mean? They're sort of softening our regulations. I just want to make sure that none of these are doing that. But these are our higher requirements.
Yes, these were proposed by the applicant and vetted by staff.
Okay. Are any of them less restrictive than we usually have?
No, they go above and beyond the current requirements.
Okay, that's, thank you very much for that, appreciate it. Councilmember Fender, did you have?
Well, I remembered the question that I had previously. I wanted to confirm, it doesn't appear Duke Energy owns these two parcels of land now? Will Duke Energy be purchasing them?
Yes, ma'am, we would. We're currently engaged in an option to purchase the existing property owner, and our option is contingent on completion of their due diligence and some of that due diligence, including local zone.
Okay, thank you.
Would you, would the applicant consider trying to purchase those other two residential properties to make it so it's not even a question of their value going down?
My understanding is at this point, those property owners have not approached Duke Energy to that. And so we can't really provide a set answer to that question. They have been notified of this public hearing. We have provided evidence in the record that's not contested that the property values will not be substantially injured. If they were to come to Duke Energy, that would be a separate conversation at a later date. And I can have someone from Duke Energy provide more context, but that's about where we would stand. Because at this point, they have not approached Duke in that capacity.
Probably wouldn't even know how.
Thank you very much, appreciate that answer. Councilmember Rau, did you have another question or thought?
No, it's on the panel.
Okay. If we don't have any other questions this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
So just a request, can we have this presentation, please? Okay, thank you.
We are scheduled to vote on this on the 25th. No other questions? Is there anything else that Amy would like to bring forth or close up with? I'd like to recognize Frank Gray or County Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, just going back to the whole process of this quasi-judicial function, I would encourage you not to do any separate internet research or talk to your neighbors about it. I mean, again, whatever you decide should be based on what's presented here. So if you have a question that comes up after you're looking at the material, I would suggest you send it to Brittany, and then she can share it with the applicant. And then at the June 25th meeting, they can present answers to any questions you might have. But, you know, unlike a zoning where you might talk to your neighbors or your friends about it, it's not that kind of thing. It's supposed to be based on the evidence and testimony that's presented that each of you here at the same time.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna ask you for kind of a summary that we're not even supposed to discuss this amongst ourselves in between the meetings.
Correct, but you can certainly study all the material and the presentation that you're being provided and the appraisal. And again, if you have questions, I would suggest you route them through Brittany for the next meeting.
I would just ask, how could we make sure that the two residential owners are aware that they could approach Duke about liquidating or selling their property to them?
I'm not really sure that's our function. We could certainly make sure they got the letter about the hearing tonight, and they can, I'm sure they have a contact person on that information, on that letter.
Are those within the town's limits? Or are those unannexed properties? I'd be curious about that because I think we represent everyone within our boundaries. So it is, I think, maybe our role a little bit to make sure that they're treated fairly and have all the opportunity to do whatever they can.
The two residential properties that were identified in red are within town.
Okay, thank you very much. You had something to add?
Duke is willing to send a letter to those properties to let them know about this special use permit application and answer any questions they might have about it. We also do have someone from... We also do have someone from one of the developments nearby who would like to speak, so we would ask that that be open and he be allowed to speak before the public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make a comment on, sorry, what you just said. I think it would be very beneficial for Duke Energy to send a letter directly, especially to that one resident that still lives there.
Thank you.
Yes, and you mentioned this other developer earlier. This is Pathways, I believe. What would you like to share this evening after you share your name and your role?
Good evening, Andrew Castor-Birdie from King Street Properties. As many of you or all of you know, we're significant real estate owners here in Morrisville. One of our projects, which was referenced tonight, is Pathway Triangle on McCrimmon Parkway, about a million square feet, once it's fully built out of life science, biomanufacturing use, and we also own a significant property at East Ridge on Perimeter Park Drive, which is another half a million square feet of flex. And we're fully in support of the proposed substation. It'll help bolster the current grid and also allow for future development, the associated economic growth that comes with that development. So, with that, just wanted to make note that we're fully in support of this proposed substation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Yeah, I think we're aware of the energy needs, as was noted earlier. Just out of curiosity, did you guys reach out to Spark as well? Did you have a letter from them indicating their support? Don't have to answer tonight, if you want to bring that back next time, if you don't wanna.
We'll bring that, we'll bring that back next time. I know Duke is in conversations with Spark generally about development in the area as per, you know, just same with Pathway Triangle, but we can provide more information next time.
That's part of why we're here, I get it. Mayor Protem Garamella?
No, I think my understanding is the requirement of Spark is already addressed in terms of power, and this is the new ones, because last time it was factored in, was my understanding, is that not true? Because, because when they did that, like, you know, they usually, there's already embedded in the whole thing. Because that's my understanding, last time, when substation, we were talking about and the capacity planning, I think Spark was part of it and the school and other things.
So, as we mentioned earlier, the Sparks, all the large life science development is limited currently, and the ability for them to grow to full capacity is relying on the construction of the Morrisville Industrial Substation. So, all of the life science campuses, they can, we have approved the Phase 1 development, but we cannot proceed with Phase 2 and any subsequent phases until late '27 or '28, when, if or when, the Morrisville Industrial Substation is online.
Question about the timeline, right? When it came to the one in Morsville Carpenter, that was built quick, and why in 2024, almost talking four years, why is that delay there?
So, just a variety of factors. If you think about the one at Morrisville Carpenter, we already had a transmission line there, so we did not have to route a transmission line, we did not have to have easements for a transmission line, it was existing. We already owned the property. All we had to do was expand our fence, you know, do some minor grading and construct the second transformer bank. Morrisville Industrial was, it's a, you know, a net new site, brownfield site, if you will. We've got to route a transmission line, we've got to completely grade the entire site, we've got to completely, you know, build all facilities. So, you know, generally, a new substation on a new property that we do not have any development on, it takes us three to four years to construct that. If we already own the property and we're just adding a second bank, we can do that in more like 18 months to 24 months.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, a lot of good questions. I don't see staff needing to address us anymore, so as I mentioned, in two weeks, we expect to see some of your team again, and that's when we're scheduled to vote. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Ms. Johnson, Duke team, thank you very much. We will now move on to... We're now at item 12, action items. Tonight, we have one action item, the proposed UDO text amendments for masonry, painting, tobacco, and hemp sales. Government accessory buildings exemptions and stormwater management for consideration. Elliot Ward, Planning Manager, has been very patient, and he will facilitate this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
So, as a reminder to those here tonight and those streaming, this is item 2024-46-0. This proposed text amendments to the UDO related to masonry, painting, tobacco, and hemp sale uses, architectural exemptions for government accessory buildings and stormwater management. This item was originally presented to Council at the May 14th meeting. At that May 14th meeting, there were some questions specifically related to the tobacco and hemp sales use that I wanted to provide updates for tonight. At that meeting, Council asked about places where children congregate and play, and whether a thousand-foot buffer for tobacco and hemp use should be placed around those as well. Staff considered this question and felt that including all private recreation facilities could be problematic due to the difficulty of keeping up with enforcement of these uses, and whether recreation facilities, residential support uses should also be included, which would include all playgrounds, all swimming pools, et cetera. So, it could get somewhat convoluted. We did consider, though, the, due to the sheer number of youth using Wake Competition Center, Rush Hour, Urban Air, that it did make sense to provide a buffer around the Gateway Overlay Go District as a whole, which we provide a new map here showing that buffer around the Gateway Overlay District here in blue. This would buffer those three uses specifically, but also maintain that pedestrian-friendly walkable field of the Go District. So, therefore, we updated the use-specific standard language in section 4.2.5. E6B for the tobacco and hemp use to include and/or any properties located within the Gateway Overlay Go zoning district. There were also, there was also discussion at the May 14th meeting about the tobacco and hemp use definition language in section 11.5, in particular, that all other vaping products shown here should be added in case there were any missed previously. Council also asked about the previous wording that was in the definition of any amount of THC, and whether that may prevent CBD or other hemp products that are not related to smoking. Staff spoke with Wake County Planning and confirmed that the original language of a certain amount, shown here, a certain amount of THC, was included specifically by Wake County to allow for these other products and uses. Therefore, staff recommends reverting back to this original language. Finally, Council had a question about how the town can enforce the separation requirement for the tobacco and hemp use. Similar to other use allowances, staff often relies on the building permit and site plan application processes to indicate a use in a building or tenant space. It is ultimately the responsibility of the property owner or slash manager, however, to ensure that the use complies with UDO. If a tobacco and/or hemp use were to be put in place and not meeting that thousand-foot separation requirement, the use would be in violation of UDO, and staff could proceed with code enforcement procedures for remediation. Planning will also plan to work with our Communications Department and the Chamber of Commerce to advertise the, these new distance requirements to future potential businesses. And just as a reminder, this item is slated for action this evening. Potential options to counsel are approve the proposed UDO text amendments, approve the amendments with changes, or deny the amendments, and here is the ordinance language here. And those are the only updates I have, but I'll happy to take any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
So, I appreciate the modifications you made to the language. Just one question, because I'm not sure how we left it after our last discussion. Are we including the buffer around the greenways or not?
Make it back up to the maps here. I think after the previous discussion, it seemed that Council did not want to include the greenways with the buffer and just the school, daycares, places of worship, and the parks shown here in this map.
I don't think we really took account on that. I would propose that we restrict, keep the buffer around the greenways as well, only because, you know, I was looking at how many vaping shops we have in the town of Morrisville now, and we already have the four vaping shops and then the one hemp CBD store at Grace Park. I really don't think we need any more vaping shops in the town of Morrisville. Mayor Protem Garamella keeps shrinking our town, and now we're down to nine square miles. But, so I think five vaping shops in nine square miles is, well, personally, five too many, but I think we have enough vaping shops as it is, and so I would encourage the Council to consider including the buffers around the greenways, just as a way of minimizing the likelihood of additional vaping shops. Because personally, I think like that one that is in Harris Teeter that I look at, it's just tacky looking. You generally see vaping shops in these rundown strip malls, and I think it looks out of place at our Harris Teeter Shopping Center, and I just don't, I really don't want to see more of these in our town.
Okay, yeah, and if the Council all feel strongly, we would obviously update the language prior to updating UDO.
So, I'd be interested in hearing what other Council members think of that.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, I actually don't disagree with Councilmember Fender, but, or and, and, I thought when we had this conversation, and you can remind us, I thought when we had this conversation, there was concern over this map on the right, because it included so much of the town that we might be in jeopardy of having lawsuits or having issues. So, if you can refresh our memory on that conversation, that would be helpful.
Yeah, basically, so, I think, you know, part of the concern is that we have to provide adequate space for these uses to exist. If Council feels that we are still doing that with the Greenway buffer, that's your prerogative. I think part of the conversation was also, as we continue to build out greenways, this buffering is gonna continue to grow, and are we going to keep, you know, choking this specific use to where it can't really exist anymore based on all these thousand-foot buffers? But that was basically the conversation.
Okay, thank you for that, and just, and then remind me to, yeah, I would, I'd be happy if they all left town as well, but once a use, the, once that shop leaves, it is open then for some other use to come in. It doesn't, it potentially may not be a vape shop.
Correct, yeah. So, anything that's permitted in that, for assumption, the CC zoning district corridor, commercial corridor district would be allowed there. So, if a vape shop left and another one didn't enter within 180 days, then, and it was within one of these buffer zones, then it would not be permitted after that.
Okay, so that would be, this map on the right, and with that kind of scenario, would potentially limit them significantly.
Right, and that would be for only, for existing uses, obviously. Once this was in place, no vape or hemp shop could go into any of these buffer areas.
I, I'm fine with staff's recommendation, but I get it. I get it. We went through this with, years ago, with strip clubs, too. We tried to restrict it as much as we could, and I remember the advice was, you need to allow it somewhere, because it's a use that's allowable, and you have to, you have to make sure, as much as you may hate it, whatever that use is, you have to make sure there's someplace for it to go. So, I'm fine with staff's recommendation.
Mayor Protem Garamella, please, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Yeah, I think the concept of all this is good to only those daycare, school, and places of worship, but Greenway is far outreaching for me. I think that's what I said last time, too. It should not be coming to a level where we get a lawsuit for not giving them any spaces. So, I strongly feel we are doing everything possible at the schools, daycares, parks. I think Greenway, it touches, like, for example, the Morsel Square. If you put a radius of every thousand yards, you know, not saying that there will be a tobacco shop there, you're pretty much eliminating anything everywhere. So, it is, it's not construct to a certain location like school is or a daycare is. So, it's pretty much, you run a line and do circles around each, I think the whole town is in it. Yeah, but let's be fair, there's a certain, we can go to a certain level, but I think Greenway is far too outreaching for me, and I'll vote it down, because I think it's too high.
And I do, I do want to point out that it's not overlaid on this map. We would update that, but if Council does want to go forward with the Gateway Overlay also being buffered, this area would also be buffered as well.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Well, what if we, what if we looked at this a little bit differently? And we focused the restrictions on places that kids are likely to be by themselves, kids are likely to be less supervised? So, then we would have schools, not daycares, and greenways. Schools, daycares, greenways, parks. We could eliminate daycares and places of worship. That would open up the map a little bit and still, still be more in line with the purported goal of saving kids from vape shops.
Staff have a response?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, again, Council's prerogative, so if we remove the daycares and places of worship, obviously, that's gonna change the map here. I'd be happy to come back with a new map showing what that looks like as well.
Well, what's, because, didn't we start this whole thing because we were worried about kids potentially vaping?
Yeah, I think the general idea from Wake County was at least keep, for lack of a better term, out of sight, out of mind, so removing, at least keeping that distance from where kids congregate would help prevent it, so.
Kids that, kids at daycare are younger than kindergarten age. They can't read, they're not... They can't read, they're not vaping, right? And places of worship, I guess I don't, I've never really understood the inclusion of places of wor, worship in this, in this kind of zone.
Yeah, I think that was, just looking at other municipalities that have already adopted language, similar, what's been passed in, in other places in, in Wake County, and that was included in a few places as well.
Right, but our Greenway system is somewhat unique, and I do agree with Councilmember Fender, that it would be desirable to keep the vapes away from the green, you know, the vape shops away from the greenways. I mean, because, you know, I see kids all the time unsupervised on the greenways. So, you know, I think, I'm just saying, there may be a viable option in which we could have both.
Yeah, I think, you know, originally, this was, we brought this forward because it is a push from Wake County. Other municipalities have already jumped on board. But really, with the point with this presentation that I was trying to get across, is you have, you have a lot of options. So if council feels strongly about not including some uses and including others, we'll be happy to make any changes.
I mean, I'd at least like to hear what everybody else thinks. What are the most important uses that vape shops should be restricted from doing business near?
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please, followed by me.
So this was going to be easy, but then now we have creative solutions. So thank you, Councilmember Robati. Always, always happy to hear from you. This speaks greatly to our wonderful network of greenways. It really does, because it touches the whole town. We're trying to be connected. So when we include that, and just removing, you know, daycare, places of worship, we have a significant amount of the town that almost nears that 50% mark, probably. The idea is to, to keep this behavior away from individuals that are vulnerable to that, influenced. Small children aren't going to be unsupervised, but yet they're, in my opinion, somewhat vulnerable. So I'd like to know a mix of daycare and parks and places of worship. We actually have quite a lot of places of worship of different faiths, and that, that's significant in the town. But to understand the mix of the daycare and parks would be interesting to me. I will say that when my son went to middle school at Explorers, there was a bar that was in the back of that school, and the bar was only operating outside of the school hours. And it's still there. It, it's such an unusual, it's not a public, it's a charter school, so it's not a Wake County public school, but I, I was kind of shocked that they would have a bar right next to the school. I, I, I don't want to see a vape shop next to a daycare. That, that, that would kind of disturb me a little bit. So that's where I am right now, and still listening. Thank
Okay, I'm one of the few who hasn't weighed in, and then we'll have a second round for those who wish. I would support the thousand-foot buffer along greenways as well. I look at that map, and I still see there's lots of pockets and already existing vape shops in town, so I don't think we would be at legal risk if the council and staff, would we be able to have certain buffers for certain uses, like a 500-foot buffer for our greenways to be a little less restrictive, or does it all have to be 1,000?
No, we can tailor it however you'd like. Let me go back to some examples here. So just, you know, examples from other, from other places, they all follow the same distance, but, you know, this is our language in our UDO, so if you choose 1,000 feet from schools, 500 feet from greenways, we can incorporate that.
Because that would be a nod towards trying to be, allow more, or would that put us at more risk? I'd like to ask our attorney.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a material difference. Would she ever counsel preferred?
Okay, so as we're sort of throwing things up in the air, that would be one thing that might make it more palatable for all of us if we were going to include greenways at all. I think everyone's had a chance to speak up who wished, so we'll do a second round, and then we're going to have to try to come together on directing staff, so they're not bringing back like six maps, because it doesn't look, well, we, we might be able to vote tonight, but we're just going to see. So Councilmember Rao, and then we'll do our second round.
I'm support, I'm the support of the greenways being at.
At 1,000 or 500 or either?
Either, I'm fine.
Okay, that's helpful. So staff's going to start taking notes about where we are on stuff. Councilmember Fender, and then Council, Mayor Protem Garamella, please.
Okay, first, I guess I don't want to be bending over backwards for the vaping industry. They are, it is a real problem with teenagers, so I don't think we should be bending over backwards to allow more of the businesses in our town. I, given that, I do like the mayor's idea of the buffer 500 feet around the Greenway. The other idea I thought about was instead of, and I don't know, you guys would probably not like this at all, but, writing it up in the UDO, but instead of listing places that it's prohibited, possibly designate locations that it is allowed. For example, like the whole area around where the Walmart Shopping Center is, and that industrial businesses, that area, and then like along Airport Boulevard, where we got frickin' Hooters anyway there, you know, along in that area as well. Those are just two ideas. I mean, that way, we're designating a place where it would be allowed, but also keeping it away from the daycares. Yeah, there's going to be a Greenway that comes in. Right now, I thought I was reading it come, one of the potential routing is right by Hooters, but I think, you know, i, if those designated areas is just, part, covers a part of a great way, Greenway, I don't think that's a problem. So I don't know what you guys think about that, whether that's more difficult or, or less.
So there are some potential issues with, you know, right now, these uses are allowed in specific zoning districts. So those zoning districts are not all, except for, like gateway overlay, for instance, you've got them spread in different areas across town. So if you're designating certain pockets, the chances it's going to overlap with, with specific zoning districts. So allowing it in one area of town in a zoning district and not allowing it in another would be problematic. I don't know if anyone else?
Okay. Maybe there's some variation that could work. But other than that, I, I like the mayor's idea of having the buffer 500 feet around the Greenways.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Garamella, please.
I am fine with 500 here. The key is, I just think, not that I like any of these industries, but nor am I intimidated with any of these industries. It's about being fair, so that it's not a liability on us. That, that's my thing. So 500 it is, and I'm fine.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson, please.
So obviously, we're asking for more maps now, Elliot. So can, can we bring out, bring back a map with the 500 on the Greenway, but then also show the GO district on a map, too, so we can get a really good, clear understanding of the difference? I would leave, potentially leave these around, too, but they don't include the GO district. So maybe that is, I don't know, we already have these, but include the GO district. And then I, I think I might, I forget who said it. I think I also would, I think it was Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, leave school and daycare. I, I potentially would leave places of worship, too, and parks, but you might want to do a map that shows, takes out places of worship. And I forget who suggested that now, Councilmember Robati. So maybe that's like four maps total? Sorry.
No, that's fine. So removing places of worship and leaving daycare, is that consensus or?
Oh, yeah, we did have conversation about that, too. That's my suggestion, but. No, you can't, you, don't, don't bring us back 12.
Yeah, I would leave all the daycares, places of worship. I would leave everything. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
So I think we do need some more maps, just to see, but what is the amount of area that would be considered fair? You know, what is, is it 30%, 40%? I mean, that's really our questions, because we would like to define some parameters so that it's fair, but yet it's protecting vulnerable populations through that. So 500 square feet does seem like it's, it's becoming more fair, but yet we're protecting the parks. I would like to know, you know, how that moves the needle a little bit. So don't necessarily need 12 maps, but it, it would be helpful to understand what is more fair, so that, you know, we can kind of make some informed decisions. Thank you.
Yeah, and I might look to Frank. I'm not sure if that language is designated specifically or if it just kind of leaves it somewhat vague.
Yeah, I think that's pretty vague. I think we need to be more specific, if we can.
So I think with, right now, the, it just requires us to have adequate places for these uses in town.
Correct. Some zone, some location.
Anything else, Councilmember Fender? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Yeah, I guess whatever you bring back is kind of pre-vetted by our attorney insofar as he feels that these are going to be defensible, and we would just ask him to let us know if we get to the point where they might not be. I think all of us want to try to avoid lawsuits, and that's why it's so nice that a lot of the other municipalities in Wake County are kind of taking the lead on this and setting a precedent that shields all of us from potential liability. Councilmember Fender.
Sorry, one last question. On this map that you're showing here, what is the, what is in red there toward the top? What, is that a specific zone?
This here, the bright red?
Yeah.
So that is our RAC district.
RAC?
RAC.
RAC. So can we just say it's only allowed in that one zone?
So you can, I mean, we've got our primary use table that shows the specific zones that this uses in right now. You can amend that table as well to allow any specific use.
Because that's what you guys did for the strip club, was just allowed it in the industrial IM zone. So that's what I would propose, just only allowing it. Would that be defensible, Frank?
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and then?
I, I think she's on to something. Restrict it to a certain zoning type might be easier and clearer even, so. But, you know, explore which, you know, of those categories might be feasible kind of thing. Because I don't know, industrial makes sense, but, you know, that kind of.
Just looking at the map, there's a couple of black dots right in the middle of the RACs, so they're within the 1,000-foot buffer. So are we saying that we want them right next to those daycares or whatever? Is it an either-or? We can either say it's only allowed in this, or we can restrict by what is near?
I mean, I think, I don't think it's an either-or. I think we can amend our UDO however you see fit, leaving the buffer requirements while also amending the use table to say that it's only permitted in RAC district or whatever district you decide on.
So bringing those together is a lot more limiting, though, because there's only a little tiny bit of RAC, so.
That's okay.
Well, you indicated it was okay if you do the whole thing, but I don't know if we can restrict it in two ways.
I think you can. Yes. As long as there's one zoning district where it's allowed.
With the still caveat that it can't be within 1,000 feet of these other things. So looking at the map on the right, or the one on the left, there's a couple of RACs that have big circles that take up most of them.
Use the buffer 500 and restrict it to that one zone.
If we only restrict, if we only allow it in one zone, I think it would be safer to have the 500-foot separation.
That we can all be comfortable with?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, it sounds like if you could bring that one back, in addition to the ones you just heard, that would be the next step. I'd like to recognize the town manager.
I'm going to ask you to recognize the planning director first.
Fair enough.
She might answer questions.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Michelle Stigle, Planning Director. If I could suggest, if you could give us time between this meeting and the meeting when we bring something back, that might not be the next meeting, we might need to go out one more after that, but maybe look at potentially two zoning districts. What I would caution is, if you only allow it in one, and you don't still have a distance requirement between uses, you could end up with a conglomeration of a bunch of vaping shops next to each other. So I think you still want to look at spacing from some of your special, from some of your more sensitive uses, and maintaining a spacing requirement between these types of facilities. And just given what we're looking at at the map now, suggesting maybe we look at more than one zoning district, but we could evaluate that further.
That sounds like a good amalgamation of what we're looking for. So is everyone okay with that? Can I get some head nods? Up and down. Okay. So we will not be voting on this. We look forward to staff bringing it back when they have information that'll be helpful to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elliot, okay. At this time, we're moving on to item 13. We're getting down towards the end. At this time, it's council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender, please. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao?
No comments.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
No comments.
That's it.
I'm going to put it in my newsletter tomorrow. Comments will be in my newsletter.
I think that might be a first time.
I said no. Literally.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Protem Garamella, please.
Who am I to break the, the trend here, no comments?
Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself. Well, I'll say no comment as well. Town Manager Zuduma, do you have any comments on that?
Heck, no.
Okay, fair enough. At this time, we're going to go into closed session. We don't have any expectation to do any public business afterwards. So at this time, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov or visit www.morrisvillnc.gov/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session. We have one closed session item this evening to discuss a matter of property acquisition.
I'll move us into closed session, mayor and council, pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318.1185. I move that we go into closed session to discuss a real property acquisition matter.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, going to closed session. All those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? We are in closed session, it is 10:50 P M. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm so glad.